Just about there, another minute, please.
Starting momentarily, everybody.
All right, we are good to go, President Jackson.
Good evening, I'm going to, short of not having a hammer, use my cup here to say this meeting is called order. My name is Lynda Jackson, I'm president of the Board of San Rafael City Schools Board of Education, and welcome to the first meeting of the year of 2022 on January 10th. We've had a rough start thanks to COVID and Omicron, but I can say everybody is riding this through, and we look forward to better days fairly soon. We have practice in what's happening right now, and we know that the best place is for our students to be in school with their teachers, and that's what we're doing. Our first item up on the agenda is to discuss reportable close session action. We had a motion related to item 3.2, which is case ITR 2122-2, consideration of a student matter, confidential student matter. We had a motion by trustee Natu Tua Tagalua to accept the recommendation of our staff, and a second by trustee Gina Daly. So I will take a roll call vote on that motion. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palma.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalua.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, and that matter passes. So that's the item to report out from closed session. I would like to see if we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
One second. Gina, okay, moved by trustee Tua Tagalua, seconded by trustee Daly to approve the agenda for the evening. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palma.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalua.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and we have an agenda for the evening, so let's move forward. Our very next item is a board resolution about continuing our authority to hold virtual meetings. Superintendent. That's your item.
Sorry, I'm trying to find my unmute thing. Thank you, thank you. So this is when we do every meeting. This is Board Resolution 2122-22, continuing Board of Trustees' authority to hold virtual meetings. We've done this before almost every meeting, but Governor Newsom signed AB 361 into law, which is an emergency bill that became effective immediately upon a signature, which allows boards to continue to meet virtually with Omicron. That is the main reason we are doing that. We have got new equipment in the boardroom, so fairly soon we will begin meeting there. One of the biggest concerns now that we have a sound that works and visuals that works and audio is masks. And so sometimes it's hard to hear people with masks, and it's hard to see people with masks. So right now, it's maybe not even necessary as much as how dangerous it is, depending on how many people. But, but having masks, I think, makes communications a lot more difficult. So I would recommend passage of Board Resolution 2122-22.
You're muted, Lynda. President Jackson.
Yep. VP. I'll see if there's any public comment on this particular item, and I'll look to our communications director.
Seeing none.
Okay, now, I will say, as we go through this agenda, I will be asking to see if there's public comment on various agenda items as we go through, and so be ready to raise your hand. There's the icon at the bottom of the screen under, I believe that's it, raise your hand. So, and then she will call on you and set you up to speak. So I will close that public comment time. We have a motion, oh, right, we have a motion to, oh, do we have a motion? Sorry, on this one.
So moved. One second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice President Martel Dow, seconded by trustee Palma to approve Resolution 2122-22 to continue authority to hold virtual meetings. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palma.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalua.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
I am an aye, and that passes. And thank you so much, Jim, for your work on this one. We know that we are ready to come back in the boardroom for live meetings as soon as it's safe and as soon as we can be speaking without masks, is the main thing, because it's important to us that people can understand what we're saying when we're having a board meeting. So with that, I'm going to move to announcements, and we'll do it in reverse order tonight. There's a method to the madness, but we would like to start with, okay, Superintendent Hogaboom.
I think you need to approve the agenda first.
We already did that.
Okay, my bad.
That's okay, all good. So we're going to do, we'd like to start off with our labor unions. So I will invite CSCA to, to share with us. And again, for all of these reports, I'd ask each of us to stay around a minute, if it's possible, because there's a lot of--
We, we know that, sorry, we know CSA does not have an update this evening.
Okay, thank you. How about SRTA? It's Molly here.
She is, let me, she is ready to speak, so Molly, one second, please. All right, Molly will be joining momentarily.
Molly, when you're ready, you can unmute yourself, and--
Hi. All right, good evening, board members, staff and community members. My name's Molly O'Donoghue, and I am here this evening representing the Elementary School District Teachers Association, so SRTA. And just a couple of quick things. The first one is a huge, huge thank you to everyone who was able to get the tests out to students before the winter break. We feel that it has made a huge difference in our safety, the safety of students, the safety of our community, and we feel that, we know that it was a scramble to get them to our school sites in time before break, but we really feel like that testing is our safest way to keep students in school right now. We agree that students should be in school, and that's the best place for them, and we want to make sure that all of our staff members, our community, our students are safe, and we believe that testing is allowing students and staff to stay on campus. And so we're really looking forward to more tests on site so that we can continue to make sure that our healthiest students are on campus and our healthiest staff members are on campus at all times. The second thing is just a quick comment about the board meetings continuing to be online. We know that we are asking our teachers to be in professional developments that are inside with less than 50 people. We understand that it is within the guidelines of public health, but when we get the same message that we're having a professional development with staff members inside during Omicron, and then on that same day, within the hour, we get a message saying that the board will no longer meet because of the safety issues due to Omicron, it's hard for our staff to understand those mixed messages about why we're asking teachers to sit in a room with other adults, knowing that it's within the guidelines, but a board meeting would also, could also be within the guidelines. And so we're just making sure that we're not sending mixed messages out to our staff and our community about the reasons why we're choosing to have the board, board meetings online, and we're still asking teachers to have professional development inside where we know that it's possible that there have been transmissions, because we had to send out letters with positive cases. So we just want to make sure that all of our staff members are staying safe and that we're not sending mixed messages out to our community about the reasons why we're choosing to continue to have these meetings online and ask our staff members to be in professional developments. But again, our biggest thing is a huge shout out and thank you about the testing. So thank you, and that's it from SRTA this evening.
Thank you so much, Molly, and for the honesty on that, I appreciate it. Our, our next union to hear from is San Rafael Federation of Teachers with teacher Morgan Agnew.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Agnew, and I am the president of the San Rafael Federation of Teachers. Trustees, our members are exhausted. We're tired of being COVID cops, we're tired of teaching through masks, we're tired of disinfecting desks. According to the district's dashboard, about 1 in 20 of us has COVID-19 right now, and many more of us, myself included, are staying home to care for family members who are sick or quarantining. We are well beyond the breaking point. Despite all that, we are fully in support of the district's goal of keeping our schools open for full-time, in-person learning, provided that three conditions continue to be met. Those conditions are foundational and should not be controversial: resources, staff, and students. First, we need to maintain our, our current resources. We need to maintain our supply of KN95 masks for staff and sufficient testing capacity for staff and students. We're there right now, we have those things right now, we need to make sure we don't lose them. Second, we need qualified staff. We need a credentialed teacher or substitute in every classroom, custodians to sanitize high-touch surfaces, campus supervisors to enforce masking, and office staff and administration to coordinate all of us. Third, the students have to show up. There exists a threshold of attendance below which we'd be better served offering remote classes to all students rather than in-person classes taught in a large part by substitutes to the small numbers still attending. Where to set that threshold is up to you. Right now, those three conditions are being met. As long as they continue to be met, schools should remain open. And if we are forced to close because we've run out of critical supplies, sufficient staff, or students to teach, we should work to reopen schools as soon as that issue has been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, very succinct report, and thank you so much. Okay, we are going to go to the next group of, of trustees, which is our student trustees, sharing, giving us a report on how things are going. So it's been about a month since we've met. Who would like to go first this evening? Okay, is that a hand up, Sophia?
It wasn't, but I can go.
Okay, and then I see Talia put her hand up.
Okay. Hi, everyone, it's been a long time since meeting with you all. Recently, TL has adopted a new program called Quiet and Sustained Reading, where the first toy man, so tutorial, students and teachers will be reading a book, magazine, and article. And this week, each teacher will be receiving a book box from students to grab books from, from the library. Research has shown that 15 minutes of reading shows positive gains in reading achievement for students, and also a higher correlation with achievement than time spent on homework, relationships with teachers, a sense of belonging, classroom environment, or even pressure to achieve. And as I'm sure you already know, from the new guidelines, spectators are no longer allowed for indoor sporting events because how rapidly the new variant Omicron is spreading throughout our community, including in schools. We also received a great amount of student feedback from Suicide Prevention Awareness Week. However, it should be noted that the survey is representative of 9% of the student population. But to just highlight a few of the statistics, 54% of English-speaking students that gave feedback feel staff make school environments safe and comfortable, and 69% of our Spanish-speaking students that gave feedback feel staff make the school environment safe and comfortable. However, there are a few areas of growth, such as students mentioned that teachers could be more understanding if they made more of an effort to connect with their students. Teachers could have in-class discussions about things going on in the world and life, and there could also be mental health breaks or check-ins. With Omicron, the rise in cases that are higher than ever, TL has been handling it really well with on-campus testing, as people already mentioned, which has been really successful in catching cases before students come into school. And it's also really useful with the shortage of at-home kits that used to be available and which are now really limited. We also recently just had our superintendent student advisory council meeting last Wednesday, and we are again focusing on issues of racial, ethnic equity in schools, mental health resources, and homework, with our current focus more on homework. And Talia and I will be talking with our principals on these three issues with possible solutions and ideas to bring to teachers from the advisory council. And quickly, lastly, as Mr. Agnew just mentioned, many students have been staying home because of family members being sick, having to take care of siblings, and also many parents are uncomfortable with sending their children to school. So that is something a little bit difficult, because students really don't know how to report that to the office, because we can do online assignments, but a lot of our grade in classes is participation, that's being present in class. So that's what some families have had just trouble with, because they don't want to bring COVID to their home. So, yeah, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Talia.
Hi, everybody. So this first week back at school has been a period of adjustment. As far as COVID precautions go, each student has a different situation, and many have been confused on what to do if they're exposed or if they test positive. So an example is a student might stay home if they're exposed, which isn't necessarily the case, or a student might assume that they're not positive and not test when they need to be testing. So it's really important that safety messaging around COVID keeps getting shared with students and their families to keep people both informed and to reduce anxiety around what COVID looks like in our schools right now. As we move into our second semester, our underclassmen and juniors are starting to program for next year's classes. Our counselors will be coming into advisory through Zoom to discuss electives. We will also have our second eighth-grade parent night in webinar format next week to discuss programming for incoming freshmen. Also in advisory, our admin will be coming into ninth-grade advisories to discuss school rules to help our freshmen understand the responsibilities of being high school students. Interim principal, Mr. Peck, is currently preparing for the WASC visit in February, aided by our site council. This week, this Wednesday, we will have a meeting to help educate families on our new aligned science sequencing to be pushed out in the 2023-2024 school year, and we will also have a CLEC meeting on January 26th. And finally, in some good news, our co-ed cheer team got an invitation to the first California Interscholastic Federation Competition for Cheer Teens in February, which we're really excited about. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's a full load. Appreciate the update from both of you at the high school level. Student trustee Daniela Tafoya.
Hi, everybody. So at Davidson, I think we're just like getting prepared to go back into our work studies and habits, starting with like the new COVID variant Omicron. I think many students have been missing school. From what I heard, many students have not been doing work, which is kind of like, not, it's kind of really, what's the word? It's not good, because you're missing out on like what you're learning in your classes, and you're not, you're not going to do very well if you're not doing your work at home. It's not a break, it's still doing work and recovering. We also got, we also had our cougar named, since it's going around. So I don't know the name yet, but, because I had work to do. But I'm pretty sure its name is Burrito. I know. We also had our daily morning announcements. Instead of having our teachers read them aloud, we finally got a video to go along with things. And I think that's it, and thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll have our superintendent give his report, or do you want the board members to give their reports next?
No, I can go first.
Okay.
We'll come back, yeah. The main one is that we had our board retreat on Saturday morning from 8:15 to 11:15. We reviewed our district goals and the Together 2024. I reviewed my superintendent goals and got feedback on how I'm doing on that, and then we did some team-building exercises. We also contracted with Walt Buster, who's a retired superintendent, to, to talk to our board members, and four themes came out of, of his conversations about how the governance team is doing. The first one was about transition. The board is kind of concerned about transitions that are going to be happening over the next six months. The next one is board members all expressed an appreciation for serving students and the community as trustees. The third, that we're fortunate to be a governing team with positive board superintendent relations. And finally, we have valuable employees that need our support in these challenging times, including certificated staff, classified staff, who are always overworked, and our administrators. So I just wanted to say that this has been the best board that I've ever worked with. I appreciate the honesty. Again, we don't always agree on stuff, but we, we give each other feedback and work well together. So thank you for taking the time for the board retreat on Saturday morning.
Thank you. Which trustee would like to go next? Trustee, Vice President Martel Dow.
Thank you, President Jackson. So I'm just going to keep it very brief. Overall, I just want to send a note of appreciation to the teachers, administrators, classified staff, and students who are doing their best to wave this new surge of COVID. And I believe us that we are, you're all on our minds, and we have had many conversations at our board retreat and other one-on-ones with the superintendent around what is going on on the ground and understanding what is the support that you all need. So I just want to also say congratulations to, you know, the administrators, you know, public health, and everyone who's doing their best to come up with the best mitigation strategies and the best policies based on the case rates and what's going on. And we know that the situation is fluid, so, you know, we are really trying to understand what's going on. So I just wanted to very briefly tell you that. And there are two things that we have, that I personally have been working on recently, which we're districting, and we're going to hear more about it later, so I'm not going to touch upon that in the, in as Jim mentioned, the board retreat. So thank you, President Jackson, that's all, those are my updates on my end.
Who else would like to go? All right, Gina?
Well, thanks, President Jackson. I want to underscore what Vice President Martel Dow said about thanking our community members, our parents, our students, our, our staff, our teachers. This is, this is tough stuff. Marin has the highest vaccination rate in the state of California, and actually for five to 11-year-olds, I think we have the highest rate in the country. We're doing all the things that we need to be doing right now. And if you haven't gotten, adults out there, if you haven't gotten boosted, I highly encourage you to do it. And if you've been waiting to get your kid vaccinated, I highly encourage you to do it. This is tough stuff, but what, we can't control when there's going to be a new variant, but we can control our response to it, and we can plan for it. And so like, like Lucia said, I think we're all doing as much as we can to try to plan for it, make sure we have adequate testing, adequate resources, adequate supplies. And really, we're relying on every individual that's part of this community that when you aren't feeling well, that, that you'll stay home. And so I know that even in my own family, I get all these exposure notices from my son, he's in kindergarten, and I'm paying close attention to making sure that I'm testing him appropriately after exposure. It's, it's not easy stuff, but please do reach out to us if there are things that you need that you aren't getting. If you feel like you need clarification about what is the rules versus exposure in a positive case and all those things, we're, we're in this together as a team, so please do let us know if there are parts that are confusing or aren't working very well, because we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep this community safe. So off my soapbox on that one. The other thing I, I did in addition to the board retreat is we had a capital facilities meeting. We're going to have an update later on about the bond measure. So I will save my comments for then, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Palma.
Good evening, everyone. So I, I really enjoyed the retreat that we had as board trustees. It's always great to know a little bit more about each one of us. And I am, I am lucky to work with the team that I'm working as a board trustee. I'm learning a lot, and what I really admire the most is the superintendent that I'm working with. I'd like everyone to know that the superintendent that we have now, I don't know if we're ever going to have another one like it again. So he's really pushing to have the 2024 plan going, and I'm going to be here to witness that. On another note, I don't know if I shared this last month. With trustee Lucia and trustee Gina, we did a toy distribution in the Canal community, and we serve more than 300 children. Thank you for all the support that some of you gave us, it was amazing. And thank you, trustees, for your full support on this one. I would like to transfer now to the COVID-19 and this new surge of people getting it again. On Saturday, we tested around 270 people at Canal Alliance in the Canal community, and almost one out of five was coming up positive. And the reason why I'm sharing this is because I heard the report that Sophia, Talia, and Daniela gave. Well, they are right, maybe we do need also to send more direct information to the parents and the students about safety regarding COVID. And, and Daniela, I'd like to share with you that when a person has COVID or has COVID symptoms, believe me, there is no way they can recover and work or, and do their homework at the same time. I have witnessed and assisted people in the community with COVID, and, and it is painful, it's, it's crazy, those headaches, the fever, the body aches, that, that is true. So let's have some compassion for those people who, who get sick, and let's move on all together and try to prevent this from happening to, to us, and take care of everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. So for myself, I'll just say, we did have a parents' council meeting on December 14th, right before the break. Also attended the board retreat on Saturday morning, and I just want to share some New Year's resolutions. In case you haven't come up with one yet, one of these are going to work for you, I'm sure. So one of them is to have fun, to have more fun. Another one is to be present to the moment, to really pay attention and be present for the moment, put away the phone. The next one is to do something you love to do, like go fishing. Another one is to go visit someone you love, like your mom. Take better care of your health this year. And acceptance, to be in a state of acceptance for the place where we are right now, and acceptance for the imperative for change. So the other items, I'll just pass on to Marina or Maureen, and I thank you so much for your help. We did have our first meeting with the new leadership team of myself and the vice president of the board, Lucia Martel Dow, and I spent the holidays with my grandchildren, age one to 11. One of them had COVID over, before I got there, and I also have a daughter who came down with COVID. So it's tough times, and it's not anything that any of us want to aspire to. We want to take care of the ones who have it, and we want to get through this, because 2022 is going to be moving forward. With that, I want to call on trustee Tua Tagalua to give his final report, I think.
Thank you, President Lynda. Well, I did also attend the capital facilities meeting with Dan Zich and talking about bond possibilities and the polling results. We had a wonderful board retreat where the current board members asked me to provide them with some, some knowledge of the last 20 years of things that I could recommend and things to look out for, which was very gratifying for me. And they all gave me great comments in terms of our work together, despite how brief it's been. As a, as a community, you know, I'm deeply grateful and honored to serve our San Rafael community for the past 20 years as a school board member. And tonight, I'm announcing my resignation. This will be my last meeting. And, you know, with anything that you do, moving on, it, it can be tough, but it's just change. And as we know, there's plenty of change in the world, and it's been changing a lot for the last 20 years. And when it started for me, the first thing I thought of was, you know, what, what's the fundamental that I'm going to work with in terms of working on a school board? And I sought counsel from people in my sphere of influence, my college roommate Tony Smith and his wife Kathleen, both are education experts and consultants. And they told me that, you know, making decisions based on what's best for all kids is really a great fundamental to hold on to. So I imparted that wisdom to the current board, and I think that that's a very valuable statement, because you'll hear that a lot, all kids, it's not for some kids here, some kids there, it's for all kids. And that's really what we've tried to do over the last 20 years. And in terms of fundamentals, you know, I've, I've based my life on five fundamentals. You know, the five F's, I call them, faith, family, fitness, finance, and friends. And in that order, you know, I, I had to have a lot of faith in myself to start off with. You know, I was, I was kind of coaxed into going to lunch with Jenny Callaway, former board member, with our current superintendent at the time, Barbara Smith. And at that lunch, I was told that being on the board was going to be a couple of meetings a month. And at that lunch, I was told that being on the board was gonna be a couple of meetings a month, a few hours a, a week or, or so. It wasn't really that much work. And, uh, and that's what I had to base my decision on. So I came home and I, I spoke to my wife and I, I said, hey, this is something that, that we can do to support the community. And, and I was very happy to say yes to doing that, because I was given a great opportunity in San Rafael by having great teachers and coaches who afforded me the opportunity to earn a scholarship, to get a degree, to live my life stream to play in NFL, and then to return home here to San Rafael to raise a family. Also, having faith in our governance team. We've had a great one for a long, long time here, 20 years running. We've had great administrators. We've got three great unions. We've got great volunteers, parents, PTO, PTA, all collaborating to do what's best for all kids. And ultimately, I had the faith in the process, you know, which started with me brainwashing my best man, Todd Farber, who I've known since third grade. Raising money, putting out signage, running an election. These are crazy things that you walk into when you first start. Speaking of that first election, I had a teenager, my daughter Tiana, with her friends walking precincts. Had my wife Judy with a stroller and a baby in the bucket knocking on doors. Just an incredible experience to get started and how to serve your community. And of course, as I mentioned, changes, lots of changes, right? 5,000 kids when we started, 7,000 kids now. We've modernized and rebuilt some of the school sites. We went through a financial crisis in 2008. The education funding changes in California, first time in 40 years, and now a global pandemic that we're going through. And for me, I went from a pager to a flip phone to a BlackBerry to an iPhone. And you can find me anywhere now. It's crazy. Next up is my family. You know, I couldn't have done this without the example that my parents set for me. They really set the tone by showing me what it's like to be a community member to immigrants that came from other countries who work seven days a week. They volunteer their time and their energy to make sure that all of us kids, not just us, but everyone had fields to play on, you know, appropriate equipment to play with. And, you know, a little, a couple of extra inches on the chain gang we needed first down. So those are great times. And then my family, you know, of course, my wife Judy, who's a teacher, without her undying support through the years and the time that it took away from her. My three daughters, Tiana, Alia, McKenna, and now my grandkids, Holland and Riggins, and my son, my only son, Richie. I really appreciate the support from my family. Fitness is my next item, which is really important. And we talk about it a lot in our board meetings, our board retreats in terms of health and wellness, how important that is for our families, our kids, our staff, and our superintendent and our board members. You need to have balance in your life. And we really recognize that. We will try to, try to create spaces and support systems to help us do that for all of the people that are involved in our district. When I get to finance, I always think about doing the work. What's the work that we do at the board? Well, it's been a team effort. No question about that. Four superintendents between Barbara Smith, Laura Alvaranga, Mike Wattenpa, and now Jim Hogaboom. Incredible work by all those people to move our district forward. 14 board members, Jenny Callaway, the late Harry Holland, Tom Thompson, John Lowberg, Norman Herring, Mike Elgie, Paul Cohen, Linda Jackson, Greg Nowell, Micah Jorance Gulati, Rachel Kurtz, Marina Palma, Lucia Martel Dow, and Gina Daly. And of course, all of our community partners that have helped over the years, between Heads Up, Schools Rule, the Marine Community Foundation, and all support systems that we have and consultants that help us try to move the ball forward with all of our kids. And a special thanks to Mary Jane Burke at the Marine County Office of Education, who's been our superintendent in the county, who's also going to be retiring at the end of next year, and, or end of this year, actually. And, uh, you know, her guidance and leadership throughout the years has been just tremendous, and her support. We love her very much, and thank you for her time supporting all our kids in, in county as well. And then the friends piece, I've made some lifelong friendships, my wife and I, with all the students and their families that my kids went to school with, along with some of the staff members. You know, we started the Coleman Dads Group way back in the day at Coleman. We won a Golden Bell with that. Kudos to those dads who started it, and kudos to the dads that are out there now doing the same thing 20 years later. It's incredible. We started the crab feed where we learned how to have a good time while raising money to support the kids. And I learned how to barbecue many, many things at the same time at the International Festival at Coleman. A lot of fun with that. And of course, on a sad note, we did lose some people along the way. One of our dads, Dan Breen. We miss him every year in March. We think about him all the time, and he was a shining example of a parent who who gave a lot of energy to the kids, and not just his kids, but other kids. Great example of what being a parent in our district is. My favorite parts of being a board member are always student-related and recognizing staff achievements, whether it's for something well-done or for many years spent and energy time with our kids. The promotions and graduations and being able to give, you know, my three kids a hug on their way out of San Rafael High School. So again, it's been my privilege and honor to be a board member for 20 years. Thank you so much for all the support and effort and energy that's put in by the staff to create spaces for families and kids to do better. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, too, now we have just a tiny little agenda item coming up. Um, and I, I know you're gonna enjoy it. Um, let me start off by noting that the agenda item is, let me see exactly what it's called, recognition, Board, Board Vice President Natu Tua Tagalua. Natu and I served last year together, and it was a real joy to be in the meetings with our superintendent and be thinking about and talking about the issues and the work that we were doing. There's a few people that wanna say things to you, and I'm going to, uh, call on them. We have some hands raised. I'm gonna see if, um, just hold on that, too. You don't have to sit and listen here. Um, I'll see, Christina, do we have our first speaker? And while you're bringing up somebody, raise your hand if you wish to speak. I do wanna note that you won't be on video, but you will be on audio. And I do ask, um, if you could keep your comments to around two minutes, that would be, that would be great. So Christina, do we have a first speaker?
Yeah, and, um, if you would like, President Jackson, I can do my best to let the person know who would be next.
That would be great.
Yeah, so first up, we would have Jenny Callaway, and next we can have council member Michael Lawrence Gulati. So, um, Ms. Callaway, you can unmute yourself and begin.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Can. Perfect. Um, I'd like to see Natu while I talk to him. Can I do that if you can't see me? Maybe, maybe it's just an audio, uh, opportunity. But first of all, I wanted to thank, uh, Judy and Linda for reaching out and inviting me to, about, you know, letting, letting me know about Natu's decision, inviting me to be able to say a few words. Judy, I see your hand in the back of the screen there with that little champagne glass. Good for you, and I hear you laugh. It's good to hear that. I wanna thank the school board and the superintendent and staff who are still involved with San Rafael City Schools. I served on the board, as you heard, with, with Natu for a period of time. And, um, I, I think about you guys a lot. It's a really hard time to be doing the job that you're doing during this COVID period. And I know it's, uh, I know that you're making your decisions with all the students and the, and the staff in mind when you are, uh, doing your work. So I have been thinking about you. But Natu, come on, Natu. I'm a fast talker there, but I, I, I know that we did say we do some work. You were the right person at the right time to do the right thing for San Rafael City Schools. And I'm so glad that you, uh, joined the board, and I really enjoyed serving with you. I, I think you're a person who has integrity and obvious intelligence, but always also the courage to do the right thing and a deep commitment to equity and, um, improving the quality of education, which is why those of us who do public service on a school board, I think that's why we do these things, is to try to make things better. And you, you had that commitment. But you're also, um, really a fun partner. And I just had three little stories to say about Natu, then I'll, then I'll, then I'll pass the mic here. Natu really has a great poker face. I mean, tonight we saw his heart right out there front and center, but the guy is really good poker face. And, um, I tested it a lot, because as a person who sat next to him at board meetings, I think when I passed him a note, Natu never quite knew if that was gonna be a serious note about the content or some little joke by me. And he never cracked a smile. So he's got that great poker face. And let me tell you something else. Serving with a foot, a professional football player on a school board with you is, is not easy. Like, you know, you go out to pajama day at Laurel Del Elementary School, and I'm the one, like, in my frickin' pajamas. I got my book, I'm ready to go, and all the children are running around to the football player who's out there. He's not even wearing his pajamas. He's wearing a suit. But that was Natu. Man, those football, football cart got you a lot of mileage. The other thing I think about serving with, uh, with Natu and John Lowberg. I mean, you guys can't see me, but on a good day, I try to say I'm 5'3", but really it's 5'2 3/4" on a good day. And we all know how, how, how tall Natu is, and John Lowberg was also a really tall school board member. And we had a particular, um, athletic parent who was not happy with the way things were going. And I knew that that parent was gonna be at this school board meeting. And I had John on one side and Natu on the other, and the gentleman approached me at the end of the board meeting and really kind of bent down and got in my face. And so Natu, being the person he is, just stood up, kind of like, say, I think his body language was intended to say, hey, you know, I'm here. And then John stood up, and of course, the guy that was standing there was also equally tall. So I'm like, all right, what am I gonna do? I'm gonna stand up. So of course, there's my five-foot-two self standing up. But you know what? I felt really good, because those guys were good, good wingmen that we would need that very often. You know, I, I couldn't have enjoyed my time serving on the school board more. And what I wanna say when you move on to your next role, because I know those of us who are committed to public service, just go on to find a new way to provide that service, you're gonna find it, uh, rewarding and also fun. And I look forward to seeing you in, uh, your next role. And I wanna see you, Judy, and tip one of those glasses of champagne or fake champagne with you. Uh, so hats off to you, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Jenny Callaway, for your comments.
Next, we have Lawrence Gulati, and after that, we can have Patty Garberino.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. And thank you so much for, uh, first of all, for keeping our schools open. Uh, it's so important. So I really appreciate these difficult times. Uh, my name is Micah Joren Gulati, and I'm former San Rafael City Schools Board Member who had the pleasure to serve with Natu and, uh, currently council member for the city of San Rafael. So Mr. Natu Tua Tagalua, congratulations on your retirement. I actually cannot believe it. Uh, I really wanted to show you my appreciation for the work that you have done for all our children in our community throughout the years, 20 years. That's, that's a lifetime. So really appreciation for that. We've known each other for many years, even before I joined the school board. I remember Heads Up and Summer Fest with, uh, working with your lovely wife Judy, who I also saw that glass and the giggling. So I love to see that, uh, working on parcel taxes, and of course, anything related to San Rafael High School, including that beautiful stadium that took so many years to build. And, um, I think you both are great examples of Bulldogs pride. Um, especially grateful, uh, for your role on the school board, uh, the support you have given me when I joined the school board, connecting with me immediately after I was appointed, uh, to offer me your support. And that humanity that you have, always been accessible and available to me. Being also, uh, able to have sometimes difficult conversations and making tough decisions. But I always, uh, look forward to hearing your thoughts and also your wisdom. Also appreciate your love for sports and fitness, uh, the safety, to make sure that, um, all our athletes, were always, um, having fun, but also being safe. Being next to me, guiding me first, uh, when we were congratulating all the Bulldogs and Cougars on graduation day. That was like a very special moment that I will always treasure, especially because they were, um, our kids. And of course, the deep knowledge and experience that you have around facilities and how extremely helpful has been during the implementation and construction of so many schools and projects. To me, it has been so important and wonderful to have you on the board. The person that I could completely 100% trust, that you will get every single detail and every single cost to make sure that we wouldn't miss a thing. So Natu, congratulations again on your, on your retirement. Uh, deep, deep, huge appreciation for your service. Like Jenny mentioned, I'm sure that you're going to be, um, continue serving the community, and we will be running into each other. And I really wish you so many fun times with your beautiful family and your grandkids. Um, it's always great to see. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Micah Joren Gulati. So great to hear your voice.
Okay, next up, we have Patty Garberino, and after that, we can have councilperson Rachel Kurtz.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
We can.
It's such a pleasure. Okay, so I'm gonna try not to cry. To my fellow Bulldog Natu and Callalum. I hope you know how important your role has been to all of those students. Man, when I think about it, you went from 5,000 to 7,000 students that you were helping to, oh, bring them into the world in such a great way by supporting them as a school board member and making sure that their educational experience was stellar. You did that, and every night when you go to bed, I hope you think about, wow, that was a huge achievement. And you gave all that time, you and Judy. It was so dear. One of the things that I also want to make sure that I mention is that that was God's work, all of that time to make sure those students had those experiences. They'll remember you. They'll go back. Years from now, you've planted those seeds, and they'll remember that quality education. And that will be the spine, the backbone with which they'll be able to have those, was it five F's? But a happy, healthy, successful life. I think this is why I'm crying. Um, I saw you tear up, and I wanna thank you and Judy for being such great neighbors to my dear dad. It's sincerely appreciated by me and my family. Next time I see you, I won't be crying, but I just wanted to thank you. 20 years, man, that is huge. And thank you, Natu. All the very best. I look forward to the next chapter in watching you move on. Take care.
Thank you, Patty Garberino.
Okay, we have Rachel Kurtz next, and then after that, we'll have Glenn Dennis.
Hi, Natu and Judy. Um, just wanna thank you for all your years that you have given to San Rafael schools. You talk about 20 years, but I think it's your whole life. I know your commitment to the community started way before you joined the school board. Before I joined the school board, I actually had never crossed paths with you. Um, I quickly learned, and I think I was the only one in San Rafael who didn't know who you were. The thing with Natu, all you had to do is say Natu, and everyone's like, oh, yeah, I know Natu. And I was like, oh, okay. So I feel so fortunate that during my seven years on the school board, I was able to collaborate on so many projects and issues and work with you. With our board, we saw a lot of changes and accomplished a lot. Natu, you always bring a sense of calm and clarity to sometimes just absolutely unimaginable situations. You never blame. I learned that a lot from you. You, you never point a finger. You really work to solve problems by having open and honest conversations. When you wanna understand a situation, I always thought it was interesting, because you were like, what survey, what staff report? Or, you know, I'm not, you know, the loudest voice in the room. You went out and you talked to people. You talked to parents, you talked to community members, and most importantly, the students. More than once, you would say, I just got on the phone and I called everyone. And you basically called everyone. Um, for 20 years on this board, and of course with Judy, you have contributed beyond countless hours of time and buckets of sweat and tears. And years ago, I'm sure, I don't know if you remember this, years ago, way before Measure A and B, you said to me that when the San Rafael Stadium is built, you will know it will be the time to open your seat to the next committed and passionate community member. So not only did you see the completion of the stadium, but so much more. Congratulations to you on finishing the stadium and this chapter in your book, but I know this won't be the end of your story. There'll be many more chapters ahead. So your next F is future, right? You're gonna look on the future and what's ahead. We are so lucky to have you, and I look forward to making sure our paths continue to cross. Look forward to seeing you at the stadium and beyond. Take care.
Thank you, council member Rachel Kurtz. So great to hear your voice.
Great. Next, we'll have Glenn Dennis. If you would like to unmute yourself, and then after that, we'll do Richie Rich. Great. Next, we'll have Glenn Dennis, if you would like to unmute yourself and then after that, we'll do Richie Rich. Glenn, it seems like you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Um, I'm, I'm um, I'm here, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, cool. Um, just give me a second. So uh, I just want to thank Superintendent Hoagum for extending an opportunity to uh, to say a few words on, on um behalf of Natu. Um, Natu has been such a staunch supporter of San Rafael High School um and all the other schools in the district. Uh, and I'm going to speak mostly to my relationship with Natu and the accomplishments and the and the, just all the various um committees, the uh, the games, the events, uh the fundraising that he, he participated in or sponsored over the many years. I have a funny, it's Natu, I don't know if I told you this, but a few years ago, one of our Spanish teachers um shared a student project with me. Um, students were supposed to create a poster about a person they admired. Many chose famous historical figures, celebrities, athletes, politicians, artists, musicians and so forth. Well, this one student chose her father as, as the person she most admired. Um, that student was none other than your daughter Malia. And of course, um, you as her father was um the one person she'd married most in the world. And she referred to just all the different roles you played, not only in the family, but in the community. She talked about you being um a very distinguished family man, um alumni, successful businessman, pro football athlete and uh generally just a man of the community. Um, I was uh, I was deeply touched by um by Malia's poster. And um, and so was the teachers, why she shared with me. Tonight, I had the opportunity to recognize you for your 20 years of service as a SRCS board member. Um, I'd just like to say Natu that you've always been a staunch advocate for principals um and uh the staff that supports students. I remember when my first year as interim principal, you paid me a visit and you said, and you told me that. Um, you were gonna do the best to score me, if I ever needed anything, just to give you a call. And you continue to do that um throughout the years. I would see you, uh you were very present. I would see you at many of the games. Um, primarily football, basketball, volleyball. Um, I would um see you at many of the committees um at our school, um such as the stadium committee and uh the capital facilities committee. And of course, all the community events like the heads up fundraisers. Um, and the um, the crowd feed that, that Davidson and San Rafael um, um sponsored each year and you were always there. And which just showed just the deep level of caring that you had for um for the school. Um, most recently, uh, I just remember you checking in on me over the COVID transition just to make sure that, because you knew, because you, you knew how hard it was. And um, you just want to make sure that we had, we needed. You've um, you've been a changemaker. I know that um, the, the facilities, the stadium have been near and dear to your heart. Um, each of our schools have beautiful um, beautiful modern facilities. And you were um dogged in your, in your perseverance. You and Judy Colton envisioned a modern stadium, even when there was no funding and there really wasn't a support for it. But you are, you made sure that there was gonna be support for it. And a lot of people don't know this, but you, you served on that committee for um during the tenure of three principals, Judy Colton, Kit Pappenheimer and then me. And I think when that stadium was finally fully funded and built, it was one of your um proudest moments. I just share a couple of things about you at San Rafael. I don't know how many people know that you, your love for San Rafael schools started young and it started at San Rafael. Um, you were, you were, from what people tell me, um, a precocious hard worker, um, a smaller athlete. And uh for that reason, you achieved the highest award that we give to, um, only we give one every year. And your name is sitting there on that blanket. And that, what that means is that that hard work, dedication, um, discipline and commitment uh usually is a, is a, is a solid predictor of, of success in the future. You, you, you later were uh inducted into the San Rafael Hall of Honor for all the work that you did in the community as, as well as your personal accomplishments. You're a very caring man. Um, a few days after Thanksgiving, I received a wonderful text from you saying how much you missed me. And um, you wished me best with my um upcoming medical procedure. And we swapped we, we swapped some notes about um your surgery and um and how, how I was doing. Um, and Natu, you get that as an, as an educator, every action, great and small, has an impact. And even more so when it's part of a team and uh part of that football metaphor, right? Um, you are, your team is your family and you shared pictures uh from your family gathering and I just see the um pride and the um, just the um, just the happiness coming from um you and Judy, um amazing Judy. As you held your second ransom, uh Riggins, uh Rich. Again, these are just a few examples, um Natu, it's, it's hard to imagine that you've been so generous in your support of San Rafael City Schools. Uh, I've always found you to be fair, um a good listener and an advocate for, for children and the staff that um supports them. Um, you work very well with your fellow board members and you supported your superintendent. And that, um, and that says a lot. Uh, you're gonna be deeply missed by all on this board. And I know that you're gonna stay connected. Um, and you're gonna, you have some time to add a, a new chapter to your life. Thank you, Natu.
Principal Glenn Dennis.
Great. Next, we will have Malia and then after that, we, oh sorry. Um, Malia, I, I jumped you ahead of your, Richie, if you want to go or we can have Richie go.
So I, I don't mind going, up to you.
That works. Go ahead, go ahead, Malia, Richie, you'll be next.
Alrighty. Um, well, hi dad, it's the middle child. Um, I never knew if having a dad on the school, school board was gonna be a blessing or a curse. Every time I walked into a classroom, football field, a gym, I mean, even the grocery store, everyone knew who my dad was. So I definitely couldn't get away with much. But with that being said, having you on the school board has taught me so much about local politics and honestly, just how to advocate for yourself. Not many kids can say that they went door to door and held up signs on a busy street to support their dad getting into office. But you showed me what the true meaning of volunteering and dedication is and how important it is to give back from where you came from. And I'm just so proud of you and I'm so proud to be your daughter and I love you so much.
Great, Richie, you're up and then Manufo, you can be next.
Hey dad, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hey mom, cheers. It's nice to see you're enjoying yourself during this. Uh, first off dad, congrats on 20 years um contributing to the San Rafael School Board. Reflecting back on this journey of yours, you know, all of us, Malia McKenna and I just think, what inspired you to even do this and for so long? It, it's not a position that gets a lot of thank yous. You really only get attention when things are not going well. Um, there's a big reason that most people shy away from such a commitment or they don't last very long. It's much more than just Monday night meetings. It's taxing um on the individual and the family. You've sacrificed family dinners, missing games, coaching practices and other events. And you listen to a lot of opinions at events. I know Omen Opah are smiling really big and are so proud of everything you've done to support the kids in this community. Um, Malia just mentioned it and you mentioned it, but all the campaigning that went on throughout the years. I know that all of us were just terrified that someone was gonna ask us something that we didn't know the answer to. And we'd ruin the chances of you being elected or passing whatever measure was important. Clearly, we did our job because here we are. So much has been accomplished for the San Rafael City Schools since 2001. But the personal highlight for us will be that you were able to participate in all three of our high school graduation ceremonies. You are absolutely exiting this position better than you found it and that is the mark of a true leader. We're all so thankful for what, that you've had all the kids' backs in this community for 20 years and you will be so missed. I'm excited to see what you do with your free Monday nights and all of your extra time that you can travel and take care of your grandkids. Love you dad.
Thank you. Great. Next, we have Manufo, hopefully I'm saying that right, apologies. And then after that, we'll do Tom Cordick.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can, good to hear you.
Thank you. Um, it's hard to not be filled with emotion, just like the voices before me. Um, good evening and talofa. My name is Manufo Liangonwai and I am a board trustee in Daly City, California, just across the bridge from all of you. But more importantly, I'm deeply honored and humbled to join everyone in lifting a voice of gratitude for the service that Natu has demonstrated over the 20 years of his illustrious career as a board trustee in San Rafael. Natu's name hails from a family of kings in a small island called Samoa. His great, great grandfather was the king of Samoa and accepted Christianity in the Pacific. I share this because that is the level of deep servitude that he comes from. And it's evident that he continues to be a deep rooted person of faith that continues to represent not just our family, but the communities that he has invested himself in for many years. The foundation that you've built here is one that you were born in. Your parents were the epitome of volunteerism. They saw you gravitate to excellence and they got deep into getting behind you to ensure that you were supported and continued to be successful in every avenue that you pursued. And you never failed to make us all proud. The night I was installed, there was only one person I could think of to swear me in and that was you. A brother that I was raised with on the streets of San Francisco, to share summers for many years on North San Pedro Road, to spend luas and intoxicating nights of family and culture and community at the San Rafael Yacht Club. You brought us into this community in Marin and you've made us so proud. You're not just a gem of San Rafael, but you are a treasure, a pearl of the Pacific and our islands of Samoa. I would not be in the seat that I serve in today if it was not for you. Because of the wisdom that you have so freely given, not just to me, but obviously and evidently to so many who have had the opportunity to serve alongside. I've embraced the five Fs and I love what I heard tonight. We're adding future to that. I'm so grateful for you. And everyone that knows you, I'm sure became unhinged tonight when they saw you get emotional because you always put on a strong suit. But we all know that you wear your heart on your sleeve. Your word is bond, you say what you mean and you show up with your full self. You're always present in everything that you do. You've done well, kid. You did all that you've set out to do in this life. And I look forward to see what you have planned for years to come. Manuia, my dear cousin, honorable trustee, Natuitasina Tuatagaloa. God bless you. I love you with all my heart.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Tom Cordick and up after that will be Dan Zeich.
Good evening, thank you board members, Superintendent Hoagum for the call um to, to take part in this and uh recognizing and thanking Natu Tuatagaloa for all his years of service to the San Rafael City Schools. Natu's path in life, which we've heard about this evening, was guided and, and, and by his journey down the road as a student of the San Rafael City Schools. Elementary school, middle school, San Rafael High School and then on to our beloved Cal Bears, the NFL, a businessman and as a father. I just want to say as a, as a teacher first and an administrator, the biggest heartfelt thank you for always supporting and doing all you could for all the students, teachers and site administrators in the San Rafael City Schools for over 20 years. In addition, as a, as a coach, your love of athletics and the support you have shown all of us and for all the SRCS athlete, um athletes has been tremendous and so appreciated. Um, when I, you know, I, one of the pleasures that I've gotten over the last, you know, 20 years, almost 20 years for me in the San Rafael City Schools is meeting you, spending time with you and then ultimately becoming pretty good friends with you. And uh, you know, a couple of years ago, when my, when I asked my, my longtime girlfriend to marry me and there was only one person that I could think of that would, that could, could and should marry us and it was you. And you made our day, you really made our day, one of the most special days of our lives. And I'll always remember that, my friend. Um, you're gonna be missed on the school board, but I know how those Tuatagaloa girls have been lining up that Natu exit plan. It's time. All the best in the future endeavors. I love you, my brother. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Cordick.
Great. Um, Dan Zeich, you're able to speak and President Jackson, at this time, that's all the hands raised, so we'll see if there's any more.
Okay, congratulations Natu. Everyone is aware of Natu's acumen as a trustee. It spans not only capital improvements and business, but also across the finer details of curriculum and instruction as a well-rounded board member. So when at a board meeting, it hasn't been uncommon to hear my favorite Natu colloquialism communicate early, often, inaccurately. Forbodingly striking fear into the hearts of any staffer because this phrase signals you're about to get into the deep end of the pool very quickly. So taking the EOA or the early, often, inaccurate uh as a framework for a Natu appreciation, starting with early, E, for Natu's expertise and support, steadfast and unwavering. Often, or O, for Natu, for Natu's open-heartedness, promoting and inspiring student achievement. Inaccurately, A, for all, for Natu's abilities to bring all community members closer together for the benefit of San Rafael City Schools. Thank you Natu for your caring and support over all these years.
Thank you, Dan Zeich. I, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we had Ruth Reynolds, raise her hand. So Ruth, you can unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I'm delighted to talk about Natu. I met Natu 20 years ago when he was elected to the board and I was the principal at San Rafael. And um, I got to know him as a dad. His two younger daughters, Malia McKenna, attended Coleman, so I got to know his entire family. Especially his wife Judy, who by the way, is a tireless, fantastic, hardworking, PTO member and marvelous teacher. I have to admit that at first, when I I have to admit that at first, when I found out that I had two children of a school board member, I was a little bit nervous about it. But there really wasn't anything to worry about. Because the thing about Natu is that he is a person who listens, cares, and rolls up his sleeves to do whatever is necessary to get the job done. Whether it is as a person who year after year got us the crab for the crab feed, set up and cleaned up for the international festival, or as a founding member of the Coleman's Fathers Group. That was a fantastic group of dads who got together to improve a school through raising funds and doing the grunge work, the building a garden, or whatever else we needed to do. If you ask Natu, he got the job done. You could always count on him. He is a person of integrity, honesty, caring and compassion. He stepped in to do what was ever necessary to help, whether it was setting up a fun educational event for kids or stepping in when a family suffered an unspeakable loss. You could call Natu and he was there for the district, the schools, and most importantly, the kids. The thing about him that strikes me the most is what an advocate he was for children and for the rights of all children to be guaranteed an equal quality education. I've always thought of Natu as kind of Mr. San Rafael. And we all know and appreciate his love for the place he calls home and his passion to work towards making this a better community and better schools and a great place to raise a family and call home. I have a feeling that although he's resigning as a school board member, we will continue seeing him volunteer in this community he loves. Thank you, Natu, for all of your service and it was really, really great to work with you all those years.
Thank you, Principal Ruth Reynolds. I believe that that concludes the public comment. As you can see now, too, there are many, many people here to witness this moment. I'll bring it back to the board now. I would like to ask the trustees to say a few words because we are all working with you right now and we have things to say. So I'm going to see who has their hand up, who would like to go first. I see trustee Daly.
Well, Natu, I hope you were... I know it's sometimes hard to be on the spot, hearing all the wonderful things about it because actually, one of the things about Natu is that he's a very humble person. So even though he has spent 20 years putting in the work and doing all these incredible things, he doesn't have the ego that would tell you, he had done all those things. So I hope you are really letting all those kind words sink in. When I joined this board, I was assigned a mentor and my mentor was Natu. And he could have said, you know, I've done this for 20 years. What do I really need to do? But instead, he really was a mentor to me on this board and I hope will continue to be a mentor. He reached out to me several times. We had some wonderful conversations. The thing about Natu is he shares. So he is someone who shares his vision. He shares his values. And he's someone who really has given me kind of a guidepost to follow in this role and in future roles. So to Natu, I will say I hope that I am half the public servant that you have been. And I hope that like you, I will never lose sight that at the end of the day, we're in these roles to try to help every single child. And so thank you for that and thank you for all that you do and will continue to do.
Trustee Martel Dow.
Thank you, President Jackson. So, you know, everyone has said so many wonderful things that it's hard to add anything else. But I will have to say that one of the things that when you join the school board is a little bit similar that they tell you, no, that's a big commitment, but then you're in it and sometimes you don't realize what a big commitment and responsibility it is. So no matter how much they describe it to you, I don't think until you're in it, you realize that the commitment and the work and the hours that you have to put into this and the sacrifices. So to me, I'm at awe that someone has been able to serve for so long and still continue to inspire so much respect and admiration from the community at large, even though I've only known you for a year and that we have met during COVID times, which means that our personal one-on-one time has been incredibly limited. The truth is that I have learned from you in every single board meeting, your ability to take big issues and make them simple and explain it to us in a way that we can understand for folks that are new to the school board, being always so kind to every single presenter and staff of the school district. Your ability to communicate with them in a way that makes them feel comfortable, even though we're talking about very difficult issues. That is really something that inspires me and helps me and models the work that school board members need to do to appear professional and also at the same time, being able to do the work that we have to do and keep the district accountable. So being able to balance that professionalism and the way you communicate and engage in discussion is truly an example for all of us. I know that you probably have, you know, great things ahead of you, but one thing I have to say is that if anything that you have to be proud of is listening to your children and your family members and how they spoke about you. I mean, I could have said a million things that are great about you. But I have to say that with an eight-year-old daughter, if I ever, if they ever show up in every public meeting and they said half of the things that they just said about you, I will feel like I succeeded at life. So if anything, you have any takeaway after this, it's just to tell yourself and your wife that you have done the most amazing job. Your family and your children that showed up were incredibly articulate and the love they have for you just shows the kind of human being you are. And thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Trustee Marina Palma.
Hi, Natu. It is great to hear all these great comments about what a great person you are and all the things that you did. The school district, I didn't have, I guess, enough time to learn from you, but what you have done is amazing and I wish you nothing but the best in the future. Thank you, Natu.
And thank you for the trustees for their good words. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It is a testimony to the legacy, Natu, that you leave us with for your good work for all the kids in San Rafael. You know, you were on the board when I was first appointed 16 years ago, right about this time. And at that time, I told you I was delighted to be on the team with you. But over the years, I have emblazoned your mantra of do what's best for the kids on my heart. You have stayed true to this mantra, whether we're talking equity or classroom or the budget or the fields. Whether you were in a school or at a community meeting or at a countywide meeting. So I'm telling myself not to be sad that you're leaving, but to be glad that I was able to be able to serve with you. I look forward to staying in touch with you and seeing how you use, I think this is one of your F's, if not fun, in what's coming up. And so now I'll turn it to our superintendent and Jim, I believe you have something for Natu from all of us.
I do. Thank you, President Jackson. Well, those of us who are a certain age remember a commercial that went like, when EF Hutton talks, people listen. And I think that's about the best way that I can summarize you, Natu, and that's because you're a great listener. And you listen and listen, then you put it all together and wrap it all up for us. So that's awesome. So thank you for that. I also appreciate cutting to the chase. You know how to cut through and get to the point and get her done and that is super helpful, your practical approach. Your mentoring has been amazing and I know you like to do the mentoring. You've mentored me, you've mentored other board members and a whole bunch of other people. And you've talked about family and you helped mentor my son, so that means a lot. And I'm getting all emotional, so I'll stop that now. But that mentoring piece is super important and as Glenn Dennis said, you take care of staff. You hold us accountable, but you also appreciate us and we know that if we need something, we can go to you for help. And having Glenn say that was pretty amazing. So there are just so many things. Everybody's touched on it. I won't go on about it, but we are going to miss you. You've been an invaluable person to this community for the last 20 years. We do have a little symbol. You can't really see it that great, but it's kind of this cool little red shape. So it's San Rafael and it says, you know, thanks for your 20 years of service. We figured you got enough plaques, you know, you got your jersey up there and all that stuff. So this is some weird, cool little thing that you could put up. And now on behalf of the board, on behalf of the students and the staff and the community and everybody, and most importantly, thank you, Judy, for letting us borrow your husband for 20 years. You want to say something?
Oh, no. I've been drinking, so I don't know. But I'm super proud. We're San Rafael. We love San Rafael. We grew up here and we're still here. So this has been amazing and I'm super proud of you, Natu. I wish we were at Gaspari's having a party or a yacht club. Stupid COVID, so I'm drinking alone. Natu drinks in front of him and he said, I can't drink on the school board every day. I said, you're not on the school board anymore, dude. You can drink. So if Jenny Callaway ever comes to your house and knocks on the door and says, it's not a big deal, it's going to be fine, run. It's been a big deal. Super proud of all of your work that you do and thank you for letting us have this long talk, Jim. We hacked your meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Congratulations.
Thanks, honey. Love you. Thank you to President Jackson and the board and Jim for letting this happen tonight. I really, really deeply appreciate it. I am so honored and grateful that everyone who spoke said what they needed to say in terms of how they felt. It is super humbling for me to listen to that and I'm just, I'm proud. I'm proud to be a member of this community. I'm proud to represent my family the way that I have. And I'm proud of everyone that does the work for the kids because that's what it's all about, doing the work every day for the kids. So thank you again. A special thanks out to Glenn Dennis to get online when I know he's fighting an illness. And our hearts go out to him and his family and we always send positive vibes his way and we hope for the best there. And for everyone else, I really appreciate all the work that you do and again, the kind words, they mean so much to me. And then, of course, my three girls, thank you so much for the patience that you had with me and having to deal with the spotlight on you when you walk in the store. So thanks again. Appreciate everyone.
Okay, thank you. Big round of applause here on the screen, a virtual applause for our trustee. I'd like to say that we are now going to take a short break. It is 7:27, so we will be back at 7:35. Everybody stretch and we'll be getting into a meeting at 7:35. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming. We'll be starting momentarily, everybody.
I am here. I'm finishing up eating and I will once you tell us that we're live.
Okay, I see us all back here, so I'll bring us back to order. And we will get back on to our agenda, the next agenda item. We have some staff reports coming. Oh, first we have public comment on non-agenda items. So for that, I will, if you have something you would like to speak about that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. And we shall hear from you. And I am not seeing any hands raised. So I will bring that, bring it back to the board. And the next thing we have is a presentation regarding potential trustee area revisions. Superintendent Hoagland.
Thank you. So we have been working on the fact that we have a census every 10 years. And so that changes the the districts that we just employed a couple of years ago. And so we've hired some consultants to help us with that. Christina, did you want to introduce that?
Yeah, sure. Let me bring up the presentation and just a minute. And we have Andrew Bishop with Cooperative Strategies joining us this evening as well as William Tunic with our legal counsel, who was on standby to help answer questions if needed. So let me get this presentation. And I will happily introduce Andrew to kick it off for us.
Hi, I'm I'm Andrew Bishop from Cooperative Strategies. I'm filling in for Josh Chisholm. You may remember Josh from previous meetings. He was unable to attend tonight for family reasons, but I I will be here in Josh's place and we're just going to go over some of the the different scenarios that we have developed to help rebalance the population along with this trustee area redistricting process. So next slide, please. Just a little, this is a calendar of the events that have led up to tonight. We had an initial presentation back in November. We, after that meeting, when we looked at our findings, we created some scenarios. Those scenarios were posted to Santa Rosa, Santa Fel City Schools website as part of the public posting process. And then we're here tonight to look at those scenarios. And you can see there's a couple of other key dates going forward and hopefully we'll have this process completed by the end of February. Next slide.
Andrew, I think maybe you want to speak a little bit louder, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. So overview. In 2019, Santa Fel City Schools moved to from their at-large board election system to buy trustee area elections. And in doing that, when it moved through that process, it had been using 2010 census data. And so because it was so close to that 2020 census, now that that 2020 census data is available, that's that's really what's driving this redistricting process is we're just taking the work that had been done two years ago and rebalancing it now with the newest census data. That new census data was released in September of twenty 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 one. And when we looked at that information, it showed that there was an imbalance or of about 11.2%. So meaning that our most populated trustee area versus our least populated have a had a variance of 11.2%. And we are striving to have a variance of 10% or less. And so in doing that, we needed to rebalance the populations and have that completed before March 2022. These are the current trustee areas of Santa Fel City Schools that were adopted in August of 2019. Just for a quick overview. And we'll go into the the scenarios next. So this is our map of scenario one. And what you see here is we have similar colors to the previous map. The purple outlines on this map are going to be San Rafael's current trustee areas. And so where you see the colors crossover, those are going to be some of the areas that are are being considered for adjustment in each scenario. You can see in scenario one, there there is a boundary change between trustee areas one and two, and it's in the valley, in the neighborhood just south of Lucas Valley Road up there where the two trustee areas meet. In this scenario, it was proposed to move part of that neighborhood south of Lucas Valley Road into trustee area one. There are some other little crossover, some artifacts. You can see there's another area around the Santa Fel Airport that's proposed to move to trustee area one. In this scenario, this is because census block consolidation. So the census did change some of the the shapes of the census block that didn't quite align with the exact trustee areas of Santa Fel anymore. And so you you see that there. And in this case, that's not really a proposed change, but it's just a proposal of how the census block had changed. So the main goal is to make the the least boundary adjustments as possible. You know, the work was already done in 2019. We want to just get back to under 10%. We're close at 11.2. So we want to just rebalance with as little as possible. So trustee areas were drawn with a 2020 census block boundaries. And that, again, leading back to that consolidated issue with the census box. The only adjustments in this scenario were were the the only adjustments were used using the 2020 census block boundary. So we didn't make any splits or cuts to match previous boundaries, you know, to cut census box in this scenario. So this is a little bit of a closer look. Again, you can see the, there's a red dashed outline. That is the the these are census blocks that were kind of consolidated from 2010 to 2020. And so this neighborhood south of Lucas Valley Road, in the 2010 census, it was actually six separate census blocks and in in 2020, it's been consolidated into one. And so that's the reason why we are crossing over Lucas Valley or are crossing over the current boundaries up to Lucas Valley in this scenario is because of how that block has been consolidated. And again, to the right, you can see it there by the airport. That census block was consolidated from about three into one to include that little peninsula that has stretched over. So overall, when we do rebalance this population, you can see that our variance has dropped from the 11.2% to 6.1, meaning that trustee area two is our most populated trustee area in this scenario. And trustee area five would be our least populated. And the difference between those two would be about 6.1% difference in population. So this is scenario two. You're going to see there's a similar edits or similar proposed changes between trustee areas one and two. But the difference in this scenario is that there was also additional movement in between trustee areas four and five down in the southern portion of the district. And this was to adjust for for small population in trustee area five to to add some additional trust population because it was our least populated. But this also had the the added intention of adding some commercial and industrial properties into trustee area five. And this is, these are businesses where many of the the constituents who reside in trustee area five where they they work. And so it made sense to to keep that community whole between properties, you know, business interests and residential interests. And so there was a small, it's a small, small population change, but a kind of a big land change. So again, the main goal is to reduce the variance below 10%. We were, we drew the boundaries with the 2020 census blocks, including the consolidated blocks that we had discussed. And then trustee area five was expanded to include a portion of trustee area four to reduce the total population variance and to expand trustee area five to include the residents, their places of work to keep that community whole. And so we'll, the next slide will show those images again, kind of close up how they look. So image one again looks the same as scenario one, same boundary changes regarding Lucas Road and around the airport. And then in image two, you can see the the boundary adjustment of the territory that's being considered for movement from trustee area four to five. So it kind of stretches out towards that peninsula. And again, our most, so this leads to a 5.8% population variance. We were at 6.1 before. So again, our difference in population is going to be between trustee areas two and five, where two is the most populated. Five is the least, but we added some population back into five. So that's how we ended with a smaller variance. Okay, and now this is going to be trustee or scenario three. And so we we did things a little bit different in this scenario. First, that neighborhood south of Lucas Road, instead of kind of shifting it into trustee area one, this time that census block, that whole neighborhood instead was shifted into trustee area two. That being said, with trustee area two being our most populated and also that adding additional information, we did have to add some population back into trustee area one from two. And the compromise was down by the, I believe it's the civic center for the city of Santa Rafael. There's some, currently there's a portion of trustee area two that's just outside the southern boundary there of trustee area one. And I believe it's, these are neighborhoods that are named after the presidents. That's, that's how I called it, like the president's streets neighborhood. I don't know the exact name, but it's it's right there by the civic center. So the the swap was to move Lucas Valley neighborhood into trustee area two, move the president's neighborhood into trustee area one. And the the added difference here was I did cut that census block off that had stretched up to the airport. There's no population that was affected by it. And so in in preparing that third scenario, I felt it it may be okay to make that change. And so we gave it a little bit of a different look. The other change that happened in this scenario is the one that is similar to scenario two down between areas four and five, where we moved that business and industrial portion in back into trustee area five from four for the for the same reasons we had discussed. So again, we wanted to keep the population variance below 10%. We use the 2020 census blocks where possible, with the exception of that one block that I did split around the airport. So the consolidated blocks were that were shared between trustee area one and two near Lucas Valley Road were assigned to trustee area two in this scenario. Trustee area one was expanded to rebound the population that we lost from trustee area two. So taking in those presidents, that president neighborhood. And then again, trustee area five was expanded to bring in that commercial and residential proper, commercial industrial property to keep that community whole. So this again is a side by side. Here you can get better, a better idea of that neighborhood. We were discussing the president's neighborhood just kind of north of San Pedro Road right there. So the the proposal is to move that boundary to trustee area one, keep Lucas Valley within trustee area two. And then the image on the right again is just moving those properties, the the commercial industrial area into trustee area five. So this has a slightly smaller variance still, 5.6%. But this time we we did a pretty good job of rebalancing trustee areas one and two, where trustee area two is not our most populated. Now it's area four. So now our our imbalance is really between area four and area five. And so that being said, we're at a a total of a 5.6% variance today with scenario three. So quickly, this is just a side by side of of the three scenarios. So as one and two kind of look similar around between areas one and two. The difference between stories two, one and two is the proposed changes between areas four and five. And then when you look at scenario three, the difference there is that is really the Lucas Valley neighborhood. So we're kind of trying a couple of different things with each scenario and trying to mix and match and find what works best for Santa Rafael to rebalance these populations. So with that, we'll open it for questions.
Thank you very much for that. A lot of work has gone into this. And on the committee is Vice President Lucia and myself. And so we did have one meeting and we look forward to working to refine these. But first, we have to, I would like to get some questions. I want to do it this way, where board members can ask questions for clarification at this point. Then we'll see if there's any public comments. And we'll get that. And then we'll come back and get your comments, your suggestions and things that you would like the subcommittee and the consultant to look at. So first, questions of clarification from the board first.
Thank you for the presentation. In terms of the commercial area where you want to expand District Five into, could you explain that just really quickly again for me? It didn't really resonate in terms of the population increase in that area. It seems like you're saying that people who work in that area live in that area.
So yeah, let me clarify. The the area that's being moved is currently within trustee area four. And the idea is that there's a lot of people that actually reside in in the current trustee area five, but work in this, in the in these businesses in and around that are just, that are outside of the current trustee area five. And so we've expanded area five to include some commercial area because right now it's predominantly residential. And we included the the commercial and the the industrial areas where many of the residents in trustee area five are working.
Okay, so that I think that's my question is that you're you're, it seems like you're double dipping there. You're counting them as a residence of an area and then you're counting them as a working in a commercial area. How does that factor into the numbers?
When with the numbers, we're only factoring the in the total population. So I'm not, I'm not considering as far as employment. I I haven't analyzed employment by all the trustee areas. I was so we have, when I'm factoring numbers for each scenario, I'm charged with balancing the total population of each trustee area. So this, this in in these two scenarios was a suggestion. But it's it's not not a necessity. And so it's maybe from interests of the community to trying to
I I just think that that scenario is a complex one to explain. It's, it's hard enough for me to understand it. I don't know how the public understands that. So anyway, thank you.
I saw you hand up as well.
Me? Yes, I noticed on the three scenarios, the idea is to expand District Five or area five.
Yeah, yeah, in scenarios two and three.
Two and three. Okay. What does that really mean? Do we have that many students? Families in that area? Because I think if I understood correctly, those are mostly businesses. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's primarily a commercial area. There are, there's a small number of residents. So, but it's primarily business and commercial. Where many of the residents within trustee area five already work, but there, that business interest is not in trustee area five. And so we've, we've paired the community with the residential and the commercial aspect into into one trustee area to keep that community kind of whole.
So we have residents from actual area five now working in area?
Correct. Right? Yeah, there's, so that right, those businesses along that area are currently, you know, they're currently within trustee area four. So it's just a compromise since there isn't a a large population to move to better balance it with, with the community that's already working there.
All right. I'm sure I'm gonna have more questions, so I I'll ask him later. Thank you.
Questions for clarification, Gina?
It'd be helpful to also know where the schools are located in each area map because it's because there wasn't a level of detail in each of the scenarios. You know, again, to be clear, we are on this board to serve all students at every single school. But I do think that to have some balance to make sure there are schools in each of the trustee areas. That that is something that I would like to see. So I'm wondering if in the scenarios that you've discussed, are there any scenarios in which there is, for example, not a school in one of the trustee areas that would be moved into a trustee area?
I'll make sure that we add the schools to the maps and then that way we can have that answer to that question. I don't have it for you right now.
I can, I can take a closer look if that's helpful, Andrew.
Thank you, Christine.
I, I have thoughts about the maps, but I don't have any other clarifying questions.
Okay, well, hold on to those thoughts. Okay. We're in and we'll look at the map or what you're working on that, while you're doing that, we can take, see if there's any public comment. Why don't we do that? If you want to make a comment, please raise your hand.
None at this time?
So now we'll bring it back for some comments. You know, before we go into that, I mean, I do want to share a little bit of background from the first round. The, one of the principles we worked at, we didn't look so much at schools, but I think your point is well made, Gina. And but we really looked at where students went. Because it was, because students go to schools all over. You know, they from, and so we wanted to make sure that as to the extent possible, that trustees represented more than one school. And trustees and and that schools were represented by more than one trustee. Regardless of where the area was. This is we, I think everybody knows that students are, they cross from one area to another for schools for a variety of reasons. So that was more the principle, but I think, you know, as we move into the, the comfort of having areas and the new way of governance, that this is something I I imagine we're going to have comments on tonight. But that was, that was the thought. And I don't know that that goes away. But we do need to remember that we, you know, we represent students going to schools that are outside our area. As well as other trustees, students are coming to schools within our areas. So but, so that's one. And then another, I did ask for the, the scenario three look. Because in looking at the map with the couple of years, it looked like area five was tiny. And that's because we were really, you know, just geographically, it was really focused on the residential population. And the rest of the other areas all had some commercial businesses in it. Of, of some size. So did ask to see if we could make that little adjustment for the commercial areas. Also recognizing now, we don't know that all the residents in, in area five work in that, that commercial area, but there it's a major employment center for the city of San Rafael. And it did seem it is somewhat part of, it is part of the, the community. But that's, that's some of the thinking behind it. And Jim?
Yeah, sorry. Just a point of clarification. So trustee area five is the one that has no schools in it currently. So I mean, if you look at it, you can tell that, but that's, all the other trustee areas have a school in them at least, except for trustee area five.
So we'll get comments for Andrew. And if there's any legal questions, William is here too. And then this will be coming back. So for consideration again, we'll see if we can make some adjustments within all the legal parameters that we have in terms of numbers. So Marina, do you, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that I'm happy to pull up any map, in particular if requested, just let me know.
Do you want to kick us off on comments? Because I know you said you had comments.
Is it me or Marina? Sorry.
I'm sorry, trustee Palma.
Oh, yeah. I just want to say that I always, I always knew that there was no, I wasn't assigned any school, any specific school. It is clear to me that I'm in this board to support all students. But I also say that I have shared with all of you that even though supporting all the students, one of my main concern are those on service students, which are the ones in my district. Being Bahia Vista that I thought at the beginning that was the one school that was assigned to this district. You just mentioned that you guys can re re, you, you can, I mean, you can redo this, you can reclassify it. So in a way that I guess maybe Bahia Vista could be included in my, in my area. Is that possible?
Andrew, if you want to answer that, or is it something we need, you need to look at with the numbers?
Obviously, I would need to look at it with the numbers. Like I said, I'm not familiar with all the geography of San Rafael. But I, I can definitely entertain that and look at that as after this meeting. And maybe we propose that as an alternative to one of the current scenarios. Or we, we make it a new scenario and and I can show you what the numbers look like. But we do have some, some room to play. And with area five, I, I think being, you know, one of our least populated, just because of, you know, the density of it. There may be some room, but I can't make any, I don't want to make any guarantees at this point. But definitely I will explore that option.
Gina, did you have any comments as well?
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to lend my support for, if it is possible within the numbers to have Bahia Vista be part of area five. Given that most of the residents, many of the residents that live in area five attend Bahia Vista, I think you know, if we're trying to keep with the, with the California Voting Rights Act principle of having communities of interest together in a district, I think that definitely would be served by having Bahia Vista in area five. So that's, that's my first comment. My second comment is in terms of area one, which is the area that I represent, I think what makes the most sense is the outline either in scenario one or scenario two with my preference thing for scenario two, because that also encompasses some changes for area five. But I think there's a very natural demarcation with Lucas Valley Road. And it probably makes the most sense just geographically. And also, if you think about the enrollment barriers for Miller Creek School District, which is the feeder to Terralinda High School for Lucia in my district. I think that makes the most sense as opposed to scenario three, which would change things quite a bit and actually take a chunk south of Lucas Valley Road. So I, I think it makes more sense for area one to be changed in that way. And I would support Marina's request for having Bahia Vista be included in, in area five. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Gina, to explain the, that little spot along Lucas Valley Road, the reason it was included in the first place with the area to the north is that all of those, even though they're on south of Lucas Valley Road, they feed into the north. They don't have any direct connection to the south. You'd have to go out to highway 101 and drive around to get to it. So that's why it was initially placed in the north. So it's something to think about. I didn't realize it's the census block that brings it all down to take in some actual streets that are in Terralinda, which we didn't, which was not on the original map that was adopted. And that doesn't make much sense either to have that those few, those few residents be plopped into the northern district when they would have to go all the way around to get there. So things to think about and look out for that. Natu or Lucia? Natu, you already made some comments. And Lucia?
Yeah, the main comment I was gonna do, the main things I was gonna say, President Jackson and any other fellow trustees is that it was, it's just a reminder that the trustee area, the census areas have very strange sometimes blocks. And, and it is, as we were looking at these maps, I think it, I can see how it is confusing. Getting the business areas sometimes adjacent to a part of the district five. And now that, you know, I receive these comments, we can probably prepare better around understanding some of the rationale around that. And I think President Jackson, when we were looking at this maps, we thought also it corresponded to a similar region area, right? Like it was also seen part of the same neighborhood. So to keep it in a way more uniform in that area and coherent with the, with the census track and how it was connected to that particular area. But it was also in response on how to balance population based on the particular configurations of the census track. So again, these are just scenarios. So you know, if, if there's some concerns about that, like we should definitely take a look at it. And I agree with the idea of maybe in this district maps, as we are proposing some of the scenarios, add a little dot. So that it tells what the schools are located, since otherwise it's very hard to identify sometimes where they are located. It helps us have a visual. And I think for the public, it will be helpful as well. Thank you.
So William, Andrew, Christina, any? Oh, Gina, yes.
I just quickly looked up where Bahia Vista is. And if I'm looking at this correctly, I think it's right on the border of all three scenarios for area five. So I wonder if there's a way, I know we're trying to keep census tracks together. And I think that is, that is a good goal. But if there's a way to redraw that to just encompass the school. So you're not, therefore you're not adding more population, but you're just adding the school itself. I would like to see a map drawn that way, if it's possible. Because hopefully that wouldn't mess up the numbers, is my thought.
Okay. All right. I think Christina, it's all back to you for corralling us and, and working to bring back another another round of maps for consideration. And then we are looking at adopting these the end of next month, I believe. Right? Is that right? Or early March? Yeah, right. Because they have to be adopted by March 1st. So we'll have a couple more looks at this. Appreciate your work on it, everybody. And we've got some good, good things to think about and some sharpen our pencils. Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next agenda item now, which is okay, we are going to have an update on COVID-19, our revised 32-point plan. View superintendent.
Thank you, President Jackson. So I mean, unfortunately, I think we all were hoping that we would be in a different place than we are right now with Omicron, but this is where we are. I appreciate the board's comments, appreciating our staff. I mean, again, just when we thought we were out of the woods, we find we're right back in there. Listening to our teacher reps, you know, our teachers are exhausted. Parents are exhausted, kids are exhausted. I mean, administrators are exhausted. And I really appreciated Morgan's comments tonight. And, and I think we're trying to do those things. I did state very strongly in the paper that I want to keep our schools open and clearly I do. I mean, but there could come a time where that's not possible. I mean, if there's no teachers and there's no kids, then there's really no point in doing that. So we want to give a little update tonight. But I do just want to echo what our, what our board member said, which is we really appreciate so much all that everybody's doing and also the understanding. I mean, we, we, people have been very understanding that these are just incredibly difficult and challenging times. Speaking for district office staff, we were hoping to be moving on to some other things and pretty much what we talked about now are COVID-19 protocols and safety measures. So we're kind of back where we were, but that's just the way it goes. You know, we've talked a lot with Lisa Santora. I also just want to thank once again the Marin County Office of Education with Mary Jane and Public Safety of Marin. Lisa Santora came and spoke with our principals last Friday because we had a lot of questions about the updates. She's always available for us whenever we need anything. We're trying to get, you know, a Santa Fe site for booster shots. They're always happy to try to work with us on that. So yeah, keeping students and safety at the center of all we try to do right now is the founding point. Next slide, Christina. So again, being flexible and appreciate understanding is where we are. Omicron is different because it's highly contagious. I mean, it's not quite as, the, the effects aren't so severe. So we haven't seen as many hospitalizations. But I think the first time, just speaking personally, that we had the Delta variant, I didn't know anybody. And now I think all of us know a lot of people, including ourselves, who've been, who've been struck by it. Again, we're following Marin Public Health guidelines. We don't make our own decisions. We follow the 32-point plans, which has been updated recently. Staffing is a challenge, as I mentioned, but we're continuing to continue in-person learning. And want to make sure that we do what Morgan suggested, which is making sure we have enough masks, testing and all that. Next slide. Safety measure highlights, I'm going to hand it off to Amy in just a minute. A couple of points, though. I mean, one, everybody knows that tests are really hard to get. I think we also know that the tests, the at-home tests might not be as reliable as the other tests that you can get. I do, it was great that we were able to send home tests. And I appreciate Molly's appreciation of that because tests are hard to get. But we did get in a lot, we got in about another 8,000, I think, tests. And we will be sending those home again this week. And I think now is a great time to do that because now is when we need to be testing. Because now when it's when the Omicron variant is, and it's, I think it probably is its peak. Lisa, Lisa Santora said that she believes that either this week or next week will be the peak. And then hopefully things, if they follow the South Africa example, will fall off fairly precipitously. So we're really excited to get those, the, the testing out to the community again with those two tests. The other, the last comment I want to make before turning it over to Amy is that, you know, there's a large number. We changed the way we're doing our dashboard. We used to just do in case, in-school cases. Now we think it's probably a better idea and a little more transparent to show all the cases that we have. But having said that, you know, most of the cases we found out about were because parents did the testing at home. So the testing, you know, was, was back to school testing outside of school. So yes, there are tons more cases now, but that doesn't mean there are really any more in-school transmissions. We still believe that the vast majority of transmissions are probably at home, in cars, you know, in coffee shops. And the last one that Lisa Santora said is sports, indoor sports. And the last one that Lisa Santora said is sports, indoor sports, um, including, uh, you know, basketball, volleyball, wrestling. Those are really a hotbed for transmitting Omicron. And so that's why, uh, they're trying to really keep an eye on that. Um, Amy has been doing a fantastic job, Amy and Christine in particular, of helping us manage this whole thing. Um, with 50 million phone calls and letters and communication. So Amy, take it away.
Thanks, Jim. So, um, Marin Public Health and MCOE, as Jim said, have updated the guidance, especially around isolation and quarantine. Um, and it's, you know, there's lots of memes you've seen on, on Facebook and other places about how complicated all of these, um, procedures are. And you really do have to sort of go person by person and scenario by scenario to figure out, okay, you were exposed on this day, here's your vaccination status, what should you do next? So, um, they are very complicated, but they are very detailed and useful in determining who should be at work, who should be isolating, who should be quarantining. Um, the chart at the bottom of that page there really shows sort of the typical path for someone who's tested positive. So if an employee or a student, um, tests positive, um, that positive date or the date that symptoms began is day zero. Okay. So then they would count five more days and then day five or the morning of day six, um, they could return to school or work if they have a negative test. And so those are tests that either they could take at home or we could provide those tests onsite. Um, but that would be the, the typical path for someone who has been diagnosed with COVID is to, um, start on day zero, be out for five days and with a negative test, return on day six. There's a lot more detail, but I won't go into every scenario, obviously. Testing, Jim talked a little bit about testing. We, um, are proud of our, uh, work with the state to really make sure that we have enough tests. Uh, we have a very large supply of the institutional boxes that can be used onsite. They can't be taken home. They're the big 40 kits. And we've just, um, gotten word from the state that they're going to replenish that supply. Uh, we did get the 8,500 take-home tests that we sent home with all of the other districts in Marin before the break. Uh, we were thrilled to learn that we got another six and a half pallets of those tests. So it's another 8,500 tests that will go home this week. So that staff and students can test, um, before they return after the three-day weekend. So, um, that's been a great way to, to get those positive cases before they come onsite. We hope that we'll be able to replenish that supply, but we know that we will have enough of the, um, onsite tests at a minimum. So, you know, as soon as we can get more take-home tests, we will grab them. Um, but we do have enough of the onsite tests to last us for quite a while. Um, oh, we're gonna go back on that, sorry. Um, I want to be, uh, clear to call out our classified staff here. Jim talked about how our administrators and our teachers are exhausted, uh, so is our classified staff. And if you had asked them two years ago, if they would be swabbing students as part of their job description, they would have laughed at you. Um, but I want to call out in this picture, Maria Rodriguez, Tanya Morales and Carmen Puga, our administrative assistants from our high schools. Um, that's on a Saturday. So they all came to work on a Saturday and tested kids so that they could continue to participate in sports. So, um, that's just three examples of our awesome staff that's really going above and beyond to, um, make sure everybody's safe. Um, okay. So, um, as Jim alluded to, we are working to, um, provide a booster clinic for people that need that booster shot. If you haven't gotten a booster shot and yeah, there are plenty available in the community. We really recommend that people do that. Uh, masks continue to be required indoors and should be worn outdoors if, if distancing is not possible. Um, those should be upgraded masks, surgical grade or NKN 95 if possible. No large gatherings. Um, indoor sports spectators are limited to 50 people. And just a reminder to if you're, if you're feeling sick, um, stay home, get tested, get vaccinated or boosted if you're eligible. Um, and we're continuing to have our safety majors like the, um, HVACs and HEPA filters and keeping things outdoors as much as possible. So, uh, Jim talked about this a little bit, but I want to just hit this home because our numbers look really low up until January. And then all of a sudden it's like, oh my gosh, what happened to Santa Fe City Schools? Well, our previous policy on the dashboard was that we reported cases of students or staff who could have possibly exposed others at school. So if you, um, stayed, if you were tested over spring break and you hadn't been at school, we wouldn't have reported you as a positive case. It was really just people who had potentially interacted with other students or staff. Um, because this, when we sent home that large group of tests, parents were reporting those results to us. Public health was not concluding those report, those results in their numbers. We felt an obligation to include any positive tests that we were informed of in our dashboard numbers. So I just want to be clear that as Jim said, most of these cases happened over the winter break from traveling or socializing or seeing family or all of the things that lots of people did over the break. They did not come to school in most cases. So these are not people that were on our campuses exposing others to COVID. Um, but we did, since we were informed of the results, we did feel it was important to include those. And so we'll continue to include test results from our tests, whether they happened at home or at school, as, as long as they're informed through our system. Uh, we'll continue to communicate any changes. Uh, each school reminder has a public health liaison and they are in touch with, um, with their, um, families. And they attend weekly trainings with the, um, Marin Public Health and MCOE, continue to have a close relationship with those groups. And they continue to hold, um, health events for the community to stay updated. There was one last week. There's another coming up next week and all of that information can be found on our website. And any questions?
It says, wow, that's a lot of work. Um, we'll get some questions from board members. Let's see, one from trustee Palmer.
Hi Amy, thank you very much for this presentation. Uh, I'm sure parents are gonna love this. I do have a question. If parents want, if they want to get tested, can they do it at the school? Can they make an appointment with the school or will they be referred to go somewhere else?
They, we would need parents to go through the resources in the community, which I know are, are hard to obtain at this point. Um, we have tests, we really just don't have the staffing, um, to take the time to do all of that testing. They're really burdened with all of the staff and students that they already need to test. So we just don't have the physical capacity to test families at this point.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure what's going on to be clear and that way I can also, uh, share with, with, uh, the families that asked me.
Yeah. And just, um, as a reminder, Cecilia reminded me that D-LAC is, um, also getting a presentation on, uh, COVID protocols this week.
I just got that email. I just read it and I, and I am so happy that's gonna take place. Thank you.
Anybody else? I think trustee Daly.
Quick question, Amy. Thank you for all this information. Um, so we're sending rapid tests home, uh, this weekend because we have a three-day weekend. People might be traveling for it and we want to make sure we catch those positives. Are we, do we have any protocols in place? If we have several positives in one classroom, are we doing rapid testing of the, the whole classroom? Or can you talk anything about that as opposed to individuals with symptoms or people that might have exposures?
Sure. Um, we, you know, contact tracing is really the best way to identify the close contacts and those are the ones that should be tested on day five. Um, however, in some classes, that's just not possible, especially some of our lower grades, TKKs where the kids are all over and sitting on the rug together. Um, so we have, just yesterday, or actually today, sorry, today is Monday. They did test some classes at Bahia Vista, I know as an example. So yes, it's still, we're still doing whole classes. You know, with all of the testing we're doing, we do have limited staff for that. So that's, it, it's really becoming kind of a burdensome task to keep track of all this testing. And frankly, with the increase in cases, contact tracing is a lot more difficult. So, um, but yes, there, especially anyone who's symptomatic or returning from quarantine or isolation, um, those will be prioritized for testing. Um, but it's possible to do whole classes still. We definitely have enough tasks for that.
Just wanted to thank you, Amy, for, um, all the classified staff that's helping and our teachers that are making this work. And we will get through this particular little piece, uh, and we look forward to, um, just kids in the classroom and, and, and get, and being safe as much as possible. So thank you so much. Please share that with your staff. We, we appreciate all the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
And thank you for that report. Um, I know you'll be back for an update when we need it. Um, the next one, next item is capital facilities program information. It's a background on the need and consideration of a facilities bond measure in 2022. And I believe that is, well, we'll turn it over to you, Jim.
Yeah, that's, uh, Dan Zeig. And so Dan's ready to kind of give us the latest from the polling and kind of a plan for going forward. Take it away, Dan.
Uh, good evening. I'm hoping, uh, we can let, uh, Charles, Heath, Paul Cohn and, uh, Brian Godby in.
They're all coming over. And, um, Dan, you're able to, um, share your screen if you'd like to present. If not, just let us know.
Okay. Uh, is Charles able to share his screen if he wants to, or should I, is it easier if I do it?
He, he should be able to.
Okay. So, uh, good evening. Um, I'm very happy Board of Education, uh, President Jackson, Superintendent Hogaboom. This is an opportunity to follow up on, uh, the background need and consideration for a facilities bond measure in 2022. And, um, I believe, uh, uh, Brian Godby is going to kick us off here, uh, with a, uh, presentation on how the polling results turned out. And, um, Earl and Paul Cohen are with us and, uh, they're going to follow up on timeline and next steps. And, uh, so with that, um, Brian, I can share my screen and, and put the presentation up, whatever.
I've got it on my screen. That's fine.
Perfect. Okay. Take it away, Brian.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, let me just, uh, switch to presentation view here. And, uh, everybody should be able to see the presentation now.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Great. Uh, so as you know, uh, we conducted a survey for the district, um, a variety of different objectives. We looked at things like the COVID crisis and perceptions of that in the county. Uh, we looked at perceptions of the district in terms of the quality of education, uh, managing taxpayer funds and whether you need additional funding or the perception thereof. Uh, obviously there are ballot questions that tested specific bond measures for the high school district. And then a specific measure for the elementary district, obviously. The survey sample is constructed. So the high school measure was for the entire high school district area. Uh, while the elementary bond measure was only asked in the San Rafael Elementary School District. So Miller's Creek was not included in that, but they were included in the high school component. Uh, we looked at a variety of different, uh, projects and programs that we might be funding with the measure. Uh, we tested informational and, and critical statements. Uh, we looked at rates. Uh, and of course there's a wide variety of demographics available to make sure initially that the sample is representative of the population, uh, but also for segmentation purposes. A little more on the methodology, uh, we looked at likely November, uh, 2022 voters. There's a subset of likely June 22 voters and you'll see that, uh, as we go through the data. There are also splits on the elementary districts, whether it be Santa Fe Elementary or Miller Creek or combined again for the high school. Uh, we were in the field in early December. Uh, the average survey, uh, on the phone was 25 minutes long. Uh, we completed 653 interviews overall. Uh, 423 of those were within the elementary district, uh, Santa Fe. Uh, and then the other 221 were in the Miller Creek District. Again, the high school district, their high school bond is asked of everybody. The elementary just obviously of the Santa Fe Elementary portion. Uh, that gives us a variety of different margins of error, plus or minus 4% in round numbers for the high school measure, uh, plus or minus, 5% in round numbers for the elementary measure and for the items that were asked in Miller Creek. Separately, that would be 6.5%, any questions about methodology? Hearing none, I will move on to the, the findings. So the first, uh, couple of questions we've been asking since the COVID crisis started, uh, have just been favorable or unfavorable view of how, uh, either the county or the school district has been handling the crisis. Um, and largely this is asked because people realize that this is a government agency that's sponsoring the survey and this is what they want to talk about. So we asked about it in an effort to get through that and get to the subject that is at hand. Uh, but it also provides us useful information as well. And, um, since we've been doing this for 22 months, uh, it's interesting to see that when we did the survey for you, for the parcel tax in January of 21, uh, the county was at a 66% favorable and they're now at an 84% favorable. Uh, when we look at, uh, the, um, the job, the high school this is doing to address the crisis. Again, we've got the Santa Fe Elementary, Miller Creek split to deal with. So that's why we called out the high school separately. Uh, we were at 35% in January and we're now at 55%. So, uh, a big jump there as well. Uh, and when we look at the elementary district, Santa Fe Elementary, uh, again, a jump there from 51% in January to 66% uh, total favorable. So, um, while the purpose of this question is really to get past it, uh, it is useful information and everybody in Marin County is doing a good job is, and the job performance has improved. Uh, the next, uh, set of questions, um, are really in an effort to keep this presentation under control. We're combining a couple of questions. So this is a question asked about, uh, the high school district quality of education in the Miller Creek area and the high school, middle school and elementary quality of education in Santa Fe. Uh, so we've broken them down that way and you can see them in the slide. Uh, you can see that the Santa Fe Elementary School District area, which is asked about the high school, middle school and elementary was 57% are, have a favorable or satisfied with the quality of education in Miller Creek. When we're just asking about the high school, it was 51%. When we asked about the same kind of question, the same breakdown, um, uh, but more specific to management of public funds. You see that in Miller Creek, about, uh, 41% were satisfied versus 53 in Santa Fe. And finally, when we asked people, again, same sort of breakdowns, whether they agreed with the statement that the district needs more money to do its job, 44% or 64% in Miller Creek and 64% in Santa Fe agreed with that statement. All right. So at that point in the survey, we sort of, uh, finished the climate section, if you will, and we moved into the bond measures themselves. The first one is the high school bond measure. Uh, and what we show here is breakdown, um, between the November 22 universe and the subset of June 22. You can see the, the ballot question that we asked. It meets the state requirements and then it's 75 words. It includes the, the total amount of the bond, $216 million. It shows how much would be raised annually and at what rate, so $11 million and 3 cents per hundred of assessed value. Uh, and then it also shows in the bullets, some of the things that we might spend the money on. Obviously there's a lot more things that we would spend the money on, uh, but we're limited to 75 words here. So we take our best shot and try to figure out what we think is going to test the best for the ballot question. And as you can see here, uh, in November, we're at 63.3 and in June, we're slightly higher. It's not statistically significant, uh, but it is notable at 64.3. So a point higher, uh, which is certainly a good thing. Um, and as you'll see, as we go through this, um, this sort of supports the idea that moving forward quickly and potentially for the June election, uh, is probably a good idea. Switching gears to the Santa Fe Elementary Bond Measure, uh, in November, we're at 61.3. And again, in June, we're slightly higher, not statistically significant, but a little bit, uh, and notable at 61.8. So the next set of questions, uh, gets a little more complicated again, because we have to deal with the, um, the difference between, uh, the two elementary districts. So the first set of questions are features, the things that we might spend the money on, uh, with respect to the high school bond. Uh, and we asked these items in a random order and And we asked these items in a random order, and each one was presented either via phone interviewing or online. And then we asked, does this make you much more likely, somewhat more likely, somewhat less likely, or much less likely to support the measure based on knowing that the money would be spent in that area? When we're done with the interviewing, we go back and assign numeric values to those individual responses, and you see them across the bottom of the slide. A much more likely is a two, a somewhat more likely is a one, a somewhat less likely is a minus one, and a much less likely is a minus two. We then create this score that you see here, the one point one four to minus point one five. And that's what we call the intensity score, and it's a really good way to rank these items vis-à-vis each other, because it takes all of these response categories, much more likely through much less likely, into account in one number. So you don't have to add them up and figure out from there what's better and what's worse. We also add the much more likely and somewhat more likely together, and that's represented in the percentages with the blue arrows on the far right-hand side of the slide, but they're ranked based on that more nuanced intensity score. We also look at tiers, and what a tier is, is statistical grouping that are basically tied, if there are more than one item in that group. In this case, update science labs and technology for current educational standards stands out. It's in a tier by itself. It's at the top of the list at one point one four or seventy-six percent, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. There's several items in the second tier, including update career and job training, classrooms for current educational standards, update classrooms for arts and music, modernized fire, security alarms, security cameras, et cetera. Install solar power generation to save money, update health and safety and wellness, classrooms and facilities. You can also read that as public or physical education. And you can see that tier two ranges from a one, a point nine one to point seven six or sixty-nine to sixty-three. So with those margins of error we were talking about, you can see how they're grouped together. They are numerically different, and that's useful, because at the end of the day, when we're putting together a ballot question, you know, we've got to put one sentence in front of the other, so this would be the right order, but tier two is all basically tied. Then we go on to tier three, which includes a variety of other items, and at this point, we slip, we start right above the zero point, which is basically half, much more likely and half, somewhat less likely. And then at the bottom of that list, we slip into the negative side of the coin, but it's still right about that midpoint. It doesn't go dramatically negative. The next question is, looks almost identical, except this is again for the elementary. So while it may seem like we're repeating some of the things, again, it's because it's the elementary measure, not the high school measure. So in our top tier here, we have update classrooms and classroom technology for current educational standards, replace aging portables in permanent classrooms, improve classroom air filtration and air quality for student health and safety, update outdated heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, and provide space for counseling, social, and emotional support and a student wellness center. So all of those range from a high of point nine eight down to point seven eight or seventy-two to sixty-five percent, at least somewhat more likely. The other items below that are still positive, but they're just not as strong as that first tier. And that's true in the first and second tier for the high school measure. The list for the elementary was somewhat longer, but you can see here, we start slipping below the fifty-five percent threshold necessary to pass a bond measure. So some of these things just really aren't very helpful. They may be important educational goals, but in terms of the voters' perception of what they're willing to pay for, obviously, tier one and the very top of tier two is more important. So moving on to the next couple of questions, this is the informational statements, and this was split into two questions. And essentially, the reason for that, while there's some minor differences, the difference between these two question sets is in the informational statements for the Miller Creek area, we say the measure. In the informational statements for the Santa Fe Elementary, we say the measures. So the messaging is slightly different because of the one or two measures that would be on the ballot. And also, you know, they're different areas, and so the messaging may rank differently. And that's why we showed it that, we asked it that way, and we showed it that way. So the methodology is largely the same here. The only thing to note is there's no negative side of this equation, and that's intentional. So the scaling still works the same. You just can't compare these intensity scores, a one point three seven with the previous scores, because they're apples and oranges. You can look at the percentages much more and somewhat more likely, which are still reflected by the blue arrow and blue numbers. So in our top tier here, we have all the money raised by this measure will be controlled locally, go to local high schools, and cannot be taken by the state. That's almost always the top argument in Santa Fe and everywhere else in the state. So that's at one point three seven or seventy-six percent, at least somewhat more likely. Next is by law, the money raised by the measure will be used for administrative, or none of the money will be used for administrator salaries. Even if you do not have school-aged children, it's a good investment. It helps property values. And finally, the measure ensures that all Santa Fe and Terre-Linda High School students have access to the same state-of-the-art education, educational facilities. And those are all in tier one. They range from seventy-six down to seventy-two percent. So again, you can see they're really closely ranked and all basically at the same level. In tier two, we have another perennial positive, and that's the measure requires independent citizens oversight. That's always critical. The district has cut costs and increased efficiency by sharing a variety of administrative services. The new facilities will be available to every member of the community for after-school use. Voters in most Marin communities have passed similar measures to support their schools, and local schools cannot maintain quality education programs without local funding provided by this measure. So at the top of tier one, or I'm sorry, at the top of tier two, we're at sixty-six percent. By the time we get to the bottom of tier two, you can see we drop off pretty quickly, and we're down to fifty-four percent, so just below the fifty-five percent threshold. So really, anything, the top three items in tier two are things we want to talk about, but as we get further down the list, they're just not as helpful. So the next set of questions, again, as I mentioned, is the Santa Fe Elementary list. So this is, again, different wording, because we're saying measures instead of measure. But instead of just referring to high schools, we're also referring to middle school and elementary, obviously. So tier one is a little broader here, and that's good news, since there's two measures that we need to package together. The money raised will be controlled locally and can't be taken by the state is still at the top of the list. Classrooms will be redesigned to most effectively provide students current science, technology, and engineering math instruction, sort of a generic for both high school and elementary. Even if you do not have school-aged children, it's a wise investment, same as we saw before. Measures ensure that Santa Fe and Terre-Linda High School students have access to the same state-of-the-art. Again, as positive as we saw before, the money saved by upgrading energy management, lighting, windows, doors will be used to support classroom programs, a little bit different, a little higher on this list. The measures require independent citizens oversight, again, a little higher than they were before. And by law, none of the money will be used for administrator salaries is still important, but not quite as important as it was in the previous list. From there, we continue into the bottom of tier one, but it starts skidding into the fifties. So these aren't as good arguments as those first items that we saw. And then as we go down the list, you see that we get below the fifty-five percent threshold. So at this point in the survey, we have talked about the things we might spend the money on. We've talked about the, some of the positive arguments. So we come to a point where we go back to our ballot question a second time. So we know that people have heard a lot of good things about it, so we expect the numbers to go up. And that's what we see. So this first slide is for the high school measure, and we go from sixty-three in November to sixty-six. In June, we go from sixty-four to sixty-seven in round numbers. So a little bit more, a little higher than the high school, not statistically significant, but both are going up. And that's what we'd like to see do, see happen. And we do think that, again, it looks like June is probably the better opportunity, or the most immediate opportunity, and that it's positive enough to be considering that. On the elementary bond measure, we see similar pattern. We went from sixty-one to sixty-six in November, and in June, we go from sixty-two to sixty-six. So in both cases, we go up, again, sort of saying that both are feasible, but we might as well go for the earlier opportunity, because at the end of the day, there's less time risk. The longer you go out, the more likely there is to be something else that happens, right? So it's sort of striking while the iron is hot, if you will, looks from these questions to be the most important finding. So after that, the next set of questions is the negative side of the coin, because, you know, we don't live in a perfect world. There are people who will write arguments against. This is in the high school district as a whole, and these are written so that it covers both measures in either case, whether it's one or two measures on the ballot at the same time. And in our top tier, the numbers are basically the same as the critical statement in terms of methodology. We don't put minus signs in front of them to make them seem bad, so the higher they are, the worse they are. And on our top tier, the district has imposed tax after tax over the last twenty years. Now they want to do it again. That's at point seven six on our intensity scale. It's forty-seven percent, at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. And that's something we need to be aware of, and that's obviously why we ask these kinds of questions. That forty-seven percent, if that were to turn into forty-seven percent voting no, that's enough to defeat a Prop thirty-nine bond measure, even though it requires only fifty-five percent to be successful. That means forty-five plus one is the opposite side of the coin. Don't be fooled. Rising tensions are the real reason for the anti-tax or for the tax increase. A typical anti-tax argument, still pretty strong, and we need to be aware of it. District has too many high-paid administrators, another typical anti-tax argument. Homeowners in Santa Fe and Terre-Linda are already paying higher city and county taxes increased in two thousand and twenty. You know, we can't afford this either. District, if the district manages current funding better, they would not need to raise new taxes. Pretty typical anti-tax argument everywhere, and enrollment is declining. Why do they need more money for fewer students? The good news, by the time you get to the bottom of tier one, is we're well below the forty-five percent threshold necessary to defeat a measure. So while we need to pay attention to the data and be prepared, they're just not as impactful as those items in the top three or that top four items, really, that are much stronger. But they are all typical anti-tax kinds of arguments, and that's important to note as well. So now that we've looked at the negative side of the equation, we come back to our ballot questions a third time. We would expect them to go down, because we've just talked about all the negatives. And so, in fact, they do, but we, you know, we're looking to see how far they go down. And for the high school bond measure, our initial test for November was sixty-three. It's now sixty-one. That's still above the threshold necessary to pass Prop thirty-nine bond measure, fifty-five percent. So that's encouraging. In June, it was sixty-four, and the first test was sixty-three. So not quite as much of a drop after the negatives, but a little bit of a drop. And again, arguing, I think, for June to sort of strike while the iron is hot, if you will, is a good idea. Now, we didn't know where we were going to wind up on each of the bond measures, and you'll remember, we were at three cents per hundred of assessed valuation. So we thought, well, let's check the tax rate to see if that's an issue. And what you see here is when we went from three down to two cents per hundred. In November, we're at sixty-two, and in June, we're at sixty-three point seven. Statistically, there's no difference. There's a little bit of sensitivity, but it's so small. You know, it barely registers. So I don't think that changes the going-June approach and go in-June at the full three cents, so you can maximize the amount that you could raise from a high school bond. So the next one, again, is for the elementary measure, same pattern here. We, and for November, the initial test was sixty-one percent. It's now sixty-one percent, so there's no change there. And in June, it was at sixty-one point eight, and it's at sixty-one point one. Statistically speaking, there's no difference there. So that, again, suggests that we're above the threshold to be successful in June, and so we really ought to be striking while the opportunity presents itself. We did the same thing. Again, we looked at the different tax rate, slightly lower, at two cents per hundred of assessed valuation, and not a dramatic difference here as well. You know, we were basically at sixty-one in round numbers for June. We're still at sixty-one. So there's no reason to reduce the tax rate for the elementary school measure either. So in terms of recommendations, summary, the high school and the elementary measure both do well. They go up as we provide more information. They come down a little bit when we provide negatives. If you want to figure out sort of where we might be after a campaign of positives and negatives, it's kind of an average of the second and third test, which means it's a little better than the third test. And if there isn't a big anti-tax campaign, you know, that means we're probably more like that second test, which is the reason we do the methodology the way we do. And there is no real significant difference at a lower tax rate. So we think that you should be moving forward for June at three cents per hundred of the assessed valuation for both high school and the elementary bond. Obviously, the top features that we talked about are science labs and technology, career and job training, classrooms for arts and music, modernizing fire, security, security cameras, fencing, et cetera, installing solar, updating health, safety, and wellness facilities. Similar list for the high elementary, although obviously, the science labs part of it gets pulled out. And there's a couple of other items in there, but it's, you know, substantially the same list. And then the top tier is the money can't be taken by the state. It can't be used for administrator salaries, and it's a good investment in the value of our homes. And then on down the list, I won't repeat them again. But again, given the findings, Charles and I and Paul think that we should be moving forward. We should be moving forward with the June election, and we should be going for the three cents for both the elementary and the high school measures. So that's the survey presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Charles.
Any questions on the survey specifically, or should we talk about timeline and next steps?
First, see if there's any questions on the survey at this point. And I'm not seeing any, so let's move on to the timeline.
Okay. Thanks for advancing that, Brian. Okay, so as Brian mentioned, we all, we have very encouraging news here. Supports comfortably above the fifty-five percent threshold for both measures, and so I think we should be moving forward with a bond election this June. The timeline that you have here in front of you is similar to the one that we looked at when we initiated this process a couple of months ago. Since then, we've conducted this feasibility study, and we're here tonight to present the results. Obviously, it's good news. We think there's a good reason to move forward. So our next steps are to begin the informational outreach process to make sure the voters in your community are aware of your facility needs and what would be funded by a bond measure. As we've done prior to past parcel tax and bond measures, we'll work with the district to As we've done prior to past parcel tax and bond measures, we'll work with the district to prepare informational messaging. While the district can't advocate for the passage of the bond measure, the district can educate and inform the public about needs that exist and potential funding mechanisms, including these potential bond measures. So we would work with you on that consensus building exercise. And then concurrent to that, we would also work with your bond council and your financial advisors to prepare the bond resolutions that would come back to you for adoption that would place these measures on the ballot. The deadline to qualify for the June seventh election is March eleventh. That's the date by which he was a board need to adopt the resolutions calling for the election. So we're planning to develop those and bring back to you at your February twenty-eighth board meeting for adoption. And assuming you do adopt those resolutions and put the measures on the June ballot, we will then in the months of March and April and May, move into that final step, the advocacy campaign. And this is the phase in which the district can't use any public resources to advocate for the passage of the measure. But independent advocates can come together, form a campaign committee, raise private resources to go out and argue for a yes vote for these measures. And that would take us through to June seventh, when we're, we feel confident that when the votes are counted, these measures have a good chance of being successful. If we put in the work here over the next few months to to get the message out. So those are the key deadlines and next steps coming up, and I'm sure Brian, Paul and myself are all available to answer any questions.
Questions about the timeline? This point, I like to see, I know we don't have a lot of, well, we have some people in the in the audience. We'll see if anybody wants to raise their hand and make a public comment about this agenda item, seeing none. So with this, Jim, I think without any questions or anything to move forward on, I think we just will look forward to you coming back with the package for us.
Yeah, Dan, what was the date when we were thinking about having the, we were going to bring it back to the board, maybe for final approval in February?
February twenty-eighth, we're going to bring it. We'll work with bond council and bring the resolutions on the twenty-eighth.
So I did want to mention, there's an opportunity, you know, as as Charles pointed out in the, when we've worked with you in the past, there's formal communications that the district can send out and, you know, we'll be working on those to highlight these key messages. There's also an opportunity to do some, to start the community outreach. And particularly through the 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 formal connections of the district. So, you know, one thing to think about, I was, I was, obviously, I've seen Brian's presentation already and read through it again tonight before the meeting, just to be sure I was up on it. So I was also sort of looking at the website to see what you're doing these days in terms of parent meetings. But there may be an opportunity to identify when, I'm assuming to the extent those are happening, they're happening on Zoom. But, for example, I see we are SR was the one that I would pull up. They have a meeting on January nineteenth. That's probably too soon, but they also meet February sixteenth. And there might be an opportunity if one or two trustees are willing to make a presentation that night to that group of parents, because hopefully they're going to be your, you know, biggest supporters when this thing moves into the campaign phase. And I think it's important, it's an opportunity for you, as Charles described, you know, communicate the need, why we think this is the right solution and why the board is, you know, considering voting to place this measure on the ballot. So I think there's some opportunities there. I'm happy to to work with whoever might be willing to do a little bit of that over the next forty-five, fifty days before that board meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. I think all all of the board trustees stand ready to do that. We'll have a subcommittee working on this as we did before. That would be most most involved, but I think both, you know, all of us would be ready for that. I do want to ask the legal women voters that can help with that. They like, they want a lead time. So who would I work with in terms of getting connections there to get the proposal? That would probably be early March or the end of February to them so that they can get their do have time to do their due vetting.
I think Charles, what are they looking for? They looking for somebody to present, or are they looking for like a one pager describing the, what the measure would be? Or more than one page, I mean, what?
I can't say. They have a committee that works on it, so it probably depends upon what kind of bandwidth they have in March, right? But you probably would want something by the end of March, I would think. So certainly a fact sheet might be enough.
Yeah, and by by that point, by the end of March, we'll have the draft language of the measures, the project list, you know, probably all the detail that they'll want to scrutinize to form a position. And we've been fortunate to have their support for our past measures. So yeah, we look forward to working with you, Linda, to get to get them what they need.
Okay, well, when you're, when you're ready to go, let me know and I'll get you in touch right away. I'll also give them a heads up. So they know it's coming. Okay. Anybody else? Well, this is just really exciting. And if you have any questions, oh, Natu, go for it.
Yeah, I just want to say again, thank you so much to Brian, Paul and Charles for once again, putting together a great plan for the district to do something super special for our students and families and staff to upgrade our facilities one more time. I think it's a really important thing to do, and I'm glad that the community here in San Rafael deeply cares about our schools and really wants to see that that modernization and new buildings and things happen. I'll just say every time I'm out and about, when I hear about the schools, I hear the first thing about how great they look and the new construction and how happy people are. So we've got a great track record of, you know, providing quality projects with Dan Zich and his team. And then we've got another great, you know, opportunity to show the the community one more time how fiscally responsible we've been with the money. So I'm just looking forward to seeing everything unfold and being part of that solution as well. So thanks again. Great, great job, team.
Very exciting. So we'll look forward to seeing you come back. Come back soon, Dan.
Well, do you?
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Agenda item up is also it's appointment of board representatives to various organizations and committees. And actually, what I'd like to do with this one is just make one appointment at this point, if it's okay. What we had talked about is holding this off until we get our new trustee on board, which would be the end of February. And then revisiting this list with everybody at that point. So that person has a chance to pick up a committee or two and and we could have some little shuffling that we want. The one appointment I would like to make, though, is for Lucia Martel Dow to join Gina on the bond and the facilities committee and with Lucia replacing Natu or filling Natu's spot, I think. So with that, Lucy, I think you've given it some consideration. I know you've got your hands full there a little at the moment, but are you, are you good with that?
Yes, thank you, President Jackson. As you can, I was a little distracted, but I I accept the 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 appointment. So thank you very much.
I'm so sorry for that, interrupt. It's all in the timing, you know? So we'll, we'll hold off on this. Moreena, if you could put a little flag on it, and then when we make that first meeting, when we are looking at making the appointment at the beginning of that meeting is when we'll look at this list again. And we'll have a full house again. Okay, so the next item is Resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-three about budget reductions and to require budget reductions that be included in the budget that we'll be adopting this summer. So with that, I think it goes to Bob Marcucci, right, for? Okay.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson, and and what an exciting and emotional night we've had.
I know.
This, I'm bringing forward tonight a resolution really upon the recommendation of our work with Marin County Office of Education through the AB twelve hundred process, which as you know, trustees, you received a letter from the, in September, expressing their concern related to the ongoing structural deficit that we've had in our elementary district. And so this is a resolution to create awareness, to sort of name the the challenge that we have ahead of us and sort of a commitment on behalf of the board and the district leadership to really look at our declining enrollment and rightsizing our district based on that that enrollment. And as you know, I mean, even just today, listening to the governor's proposal of budget, the news is constantly changing and and the challenge of our district budget in the elementary district is 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 always shifting and moving. It's a very much a living thing. But there is no doubt that we are overstaffed based on our enrollment. And we need to take a very hard and serious look at that. And this resolution is the first step. And so I would ask if you had any questions or comments related to this resolution.
Thank you very much for that overview of this. It does come recommended by Mary Jane Burke at the county, and they oversee our budget. They've had concerns about our elementary budget now for a few years, and this is just a a next step in that process of keeping our budget aligned with our with our program. I I don't see any, okay, one question, and then if you do want to speak, if you're in the public, raise your hand. Trustee Daly.
Thanks, Bob. And I did take a look at the resolution. I I think it does. Obviously, we we have to do something because Marin County Office of Education is saying that we do, and I think that it's good that we're thinking about this now. How how many, I know it's hard to estimate exactly, but how many positions are we thinking this reduction is likely to have to be? And and how much, how many teachers do we lose through natural attrition? Just trying to get an understanding of what this this may mean on the ground.
I think it's a in some ways, it's an easy question to answer, but it's going to be hard to find that final answer. Because when I look at our projected enrollment for next year and if we really, there's sort of a baseline staffing ratio that we have that's driven by our collective bargaining agreements. And and if we look at what that baseline is and then, you know, somewhere about where we are right now, we're probably ten to fifteen FTE overstaffed or some, it's some, the answer lies somewhere within that range of you know, that baseline staffing and then what works and makes the most sense for for all of our schools and each of our schools individually. So I think that's the work that that lies ahead is for Assistant Superintendent Bear and I to meet with each site administrator and take a look at their projected enrollment and look at their, you know, look at their staffing configuration and really have have those conversations to try to find where that where that sweet spot is, where we feel like we've done the fiscally responsible thing, but we also are sort of, you know, reducing the harm to to students and staff as much as we can. I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Bear has any other comments related to the the other piece of that, but I'll leave that up to her.
I don't think so, unless there's any specific questions.
Anybody else? Yes, trustee Palmer.
Yeah. I'm curious, what would the protocol be when we have to lose dispositions? Will it be based on, I don't know, maybe early retirements or seniority or how how do you do that?
I can talk about that a little bit. I mean, we we typically have attrition in those numbers annually, at least those numbers, Kate. So, you know, we typically have people retire, go out on leave for the year. You know, whatever the case may be. So we do have, you know, a natural kind of attrition that happens every year anyway. We also have some positions that are temporary positions. So, you know, if there was to be a reduction, those are positions with a one-year contract. We also have probationary employees, either in probationary year one or two. And so, you know, if if those employees didn't become permanent, then that would free up a space there. If we had to do a layoff, which I don't anticipate will have to do with these numbers, then the layoff is seniority based. And so the least senior person in in that credential area would would receive the layoff notice.
Thank you. Excellent question and one that is governed by state law in a lot of, all of these different categories and the timeline that you'll see that will come forward. All governed by state law and and, you know, just all under the eye auspices of eyes wide open and and early notice, so. Anybody else have a question, Natu?
More of a comment. Bob, hats off to you for doing the work that needs to be done. It's a really tough position to be in because this, of course, is where that rubber meets the road and, you know, positions FTE turn into real people. And that can be difficult, you know, some of these people we know personally, and that's, that's a really hard place to be. So I know that we've gone through this before in the past and it was not fun, but we made it through. And we were, I think, at the end of the day, better for it. We got more efficient with how we did controlled position control, et cetera. So, you know, I I'm glad that you're kind of in charge there running it, so thank you for that. And I'm glad that we're partnering with MCOE and using their recommendations, because I think they've got a a clear eye on things. So thank you so much for the work.
Okay, so is there a motion? Okay, moved by trustee Tua Tagalua, seconded by Vice President Martel Dow to approve Resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-three to identify, recognize and implement budget reductions in the San Rafael City Elementary Budget and to require budget reductions in the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget. So we'll do a roll call. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalua.
Aye.
And Vice President Lucia Martel Dow.
Aye.
I'm an aye. That measure passes. Thank you very much, Bob, for bringing that forward and and carrying it on. And and we will, we support all the good work that you and your office are doing. And this difficult topic. The next item is one that you know, Natu, this is a fun one. This is one that, you know, you didn't, you didn't do this when you first got on the board, but about halfway through your tenure, you said, you know, board, we really need to pull this and have it as a real agenda item, not just squirreled away in the consent calendar. So I'm gonna let you, you talk to this first, once, once, once we hear about it. Okay, and Bob, I think you're the one presenting it.
Sure, and what an honor. This is always fun to talk about the donations to the district, but this one is a perfect capper here from Natu. So we have a donation from Natu to a Tagalua for five thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-five cents. That will go to the San Rafael High School Stadium Tough Shed Ticket Booth. And we are incredibly grateful and thankful for that donation. And just makes the the stadium that much better. I I think we probably should name it after Natu, but maybe, maybe we should name something bigger than that, but we'll talk about that some other time. So thank you, Natu, and I'll let anyone else chime in here.
Natu, you wanna, you wanna say something about the donation? This is a really
Yeah, so it's, thank you so much. I really appreciate that we were able to get this on the agenda, especially on this last meeting, working on the stadium committee for so long. And then being able to put together, you know, a bond measure that included the stadium and the stadium being the first project out of the gate, and it was so successful with the help of not just Dan and his staff, but Dave Pedrolle and his expertise. It's a real, it's really smart community members that were involved that really helped push the needle forward on this thing and it made it the best it could possibly be. And as with any project, there are budget constraints, right? You run into the wall of we can't afford everything. So I made the suggestion of how about I donate the ticket booth and and we did that. So I'm 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 super grateful again for the opportunity to be part of that project and to to be able to provide you know, something at the entrance there that people can see. you know, something at the entrance there that people can see. And a huge thanks to Dave Pedrolli for helping me coordinate that. And he's made some modifications, you know, with some windows because of the way that it was being used and what's needed, which has been great. And I've talked to Glenn Dennis about possibly putting, you know, a plaque on it or something. I did want to donate it on behalf of my parents, who, as you know, are huge supporters and spent many, many years at San Rafael High School, on the field, on the track, watching, etc. So we'll get there at some point, but right now, I just, I'm glad that the students and families of San Rafael are able to enjoy it. And those that come from outside the the district who come and can use it. So I'm honored to have done that. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? So we need to approve this. We'll just, okay, and a second?
Seconded, and thank you so much, Natu.
Okay, then a motion by trustee Daly and a second by trustee Palmer to approve these donations. This particular donation, trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalow.
I will abstain since
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
And I'm, yes, and I'm an aye with big thanks. And so Morena, that's four ayes and one abstention. Thank you so much, and that matter passes. So thank you so much for that donation. Now we are on to the final hall, folks. This is the consent calendar, items one through seventeen. I'd like to pull item four and seventeen. Is there anybody else who wants to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item two.
Okay.
If nothing else, I'll move the balance.
And I'll second.
Moving the balance and and the second, so, and that was moved by Natu and seconded by Gina. So trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalow.
Aye.
Trustee Martel Dow.
Aye.
There was one item that I think we're pulling all together from the agenda for future reference. Is that right, Gina?
No, actually, I got clarification on that, so don't need to pull it.
Very good. Glad to hear that.
Great job.
Yeah.
I love that.
So you pulled item fourteen point two, Natu. I think that's probably to pull it with an abstention.
Yes, I'm pulling it because I need to abstain due to a remote conflict of interest.
We have a motion for the fourteen point two.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded for item fourteen point two. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalow.
I will abstain due to a remote conflict of interest.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. So we have four ayes and one abstention. Thank you so much. Item fourteen point four, and this is a question for Dan Zeig, if we can bring him, I think it's for Dan. Yeah. Both of my questions are for Dan, I think. Hopefully, he, yeah, he's still here, so if we can bring him up. On fourteen point four, we have, you know, it's about air conditioning. And, you know, there's a fair amount of money going for that. And so, Dan, I was just wondering if you had a chance to on the bond measure that we had, air conditioning is just a huge price. How much would you estimate that we have spent in order to make our facilities usable during the the year, given climate change?
I I did some, President Jackson, I did, thanks for the question, I did just a rough estimate on start to finish, we'll start to current date on the bond on air conditioning. And elementary district, we've invested fifteen point six million dollars approximately in the high school district, sixteen point seven million dollars in HVAC systems. And so you can imagine that with the with the global pandemic in effect, what a significant you know, benefit that's been to the students and our staff and the classrooms. No one could have ever expected that to have rolled out the way it did. So I think we're very appreciative to the community for the support with major A and B.
Thank you so much. This is just something, some numbers and some information that I think is beneficial for all of us to know about the bond measure and and how it really has helped us in COVID nineteen unexpectedly. Okay, so I will move approval of this item. Can I have a second? Okay, moved and seconded to approve item fourteen point four. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalow.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that's the unanimous approval for that one. And then the last one also, Dan, I just note that on, this is item fourteen point seventeen. And it's about the alarm system, and I was just, you know, I noticed in this board report it gives an amount of money, but it doesn't say really where that the source is for that funding. And, or maybe Bob, you're the one I should be asking this question of, is what is the source for the alarm funding? And then there was anticipation of future funding for alarm projects. And so I think we got the answer on bonds today. But for the current, you know, seventy thousand, I think it was for alarms, if you could say where that's coming from now.
That that's going to come from our routine restricted maintenance account. And and in the future, there has been a lot of discussion about using bond funds to upgrade our systems, much like the work that they've already done in the previous bond, all of our new construction has those updated systems. Dave Pedrolli and 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 his team have also worked to upgrade some of the other sites and 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 really, in many cases, just sort of hold it together. This particular issue out at Venetia Valley just cannot wait any longer. I'm not even sure that they make the the actual smokeheads that need to be changed out. And so we need to get that one done and then anticipate collaboration with with our next bond program to get the whole district in the place where it needs to be.
Thank you for that clarification on that. Appreciate it. So I will move approval of fourteen point seventeen on the fire alarm information, smoke alarms. Okay, moved and seconded. Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Palmer.
Aye.
Trustee Tua Tagalow.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
I'm an aye, and that is approved. So with this, we are now wrapping up Natu's very last board meeting in twenty something years, and we thank you very much. Once again, Natu, we'll see everybody else on January twenty fourth in a couple of weeks. Thank you so much. You all have a good evening.
We'll see Natu at Andy's Market.